Ready, Ms. Rosalie?
Good evening. Good evening. Are you on here? Good evening. Welcome to tonight's Ojai Planning Commission. For Wednesday, November 18th, members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on tonight's agenda are requested to complete a speaker card, looks something like this. And followed with the secretary. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments, please, to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all attendants are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Let's have a roll call, Sherri.
Merk.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Nicklin.
Here.
Lajowski.
Here.
Commissioner Nolan, would you lead us in pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as stated earlier, Public Communications is the time we set aside for the meeting of the members for the public to address the Planning Commission items, the city business other than those that are scheduled on tonight's agenda. Matters raised at this time can be briefly discussed by the commission but will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So, I have a number of speaker cards, but they're dominated by items on tonight's agenda. But I do have one here from Mr. Jim Barnett, who would like to come forward. It's Jim Barnett. Oh, Kim? Okay, sorry about that, Kim.
That's okay, that's my dad's name. We're close.
We're close, huh? All right.
Hi there. I'm Kim Barnett. I am the owner of Tiny Heavenly Homes, which is a tiny house business. And I came tonight because I was at a workshop here in Ojai last Friday. And I know that affordable housing is on the agenda for Ojai. I am a big supporter of tiny homes. I am passionate about them. I feel like they can answer a lot of housing problems. I'm going to start building my own tiny home for my son and I next month. And if Ojai ever opens that up, I certainly would consider it for my home. I've been a resident in Ventura County since 1968. And I think Ojai is just a great fit for something like this. And it would be the first of its kind if we could ever get it going in the state of California. So, really exciting things coming, I think, with the tiny movement. I think that a 30-year mortgage and rent is not for everyone. And there's times in our lives where we need a different way. And I just feel very passionate about it. And I just wanted to express my hope for that.
Good.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we've all heard good things about the tiny home movement as it comes to Ojai and the workshop that was recently held. So, was there anybody else in the public that would like to come forward and speak on a matter other than one of the items that we're addressing this evening? Now would be the time. Okay, we'll move on then. Our next item is for consent items, which would be the minutes from our regular Planning Commission meeting from November 4th. I'll need a motion.
Chair, I have one revision.
Okay.
To make on page three of four. Almost at the bottom of the page said Commissioner Lajowski agrees with Commissioner Isabella's comments. I'd like to amend that with some of. She said a lot of things there. Don't necessarily agree with all of them, but I do agree with some of them. Thank you.
Sherri, you want to make that edit there? All right. Okay. Duly noted. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2015, meeting of the Planning Commission and amended as Commissioner Lajowski just mentioned.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Merk.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Lajowski.
Yes.
Okay. Disclosure of site visits and expertise contacts. Commissioner Merk?
I've visited both sites and I had no expertise contacts.
I visited, excuse me, I visited both sites and I'm familiar with both projects. I've had conversations with both parties. Not detailed conversations, but I've, I think Tony, one of the sponsors of the boutique park, was at the tiny home workshop that I was there. So, we had brief conversation there. And I've talked to Bill Mellett a little bit about the project for the racket club.
I've visited both sites and have had no expertise contact.
I've visited both sites and I was contacted by the applicant on the concept review, item number three, the discussion item. And that was quite a few months ago and it was very general in context. And I've also had several members of the public contact me in regards to that project.
I've visited both sites and haven't.
I've visited both sites and haven't had any expertise contacts.
I've visited both sites and no expertise contacts.
I too am familiar and have visited both sites and I have had no expertise contact.
Okay. Alrighty then. Our first item for our public hearing is design review permit, ERP 14-20, for five new carports with photovoltaic modules and a microturban cogeneration system and a tree permit, T15-50, for the removal of two protected trees and to work within the drip line of one protected tree at the Ojai Valley Athletic Club located at 409 Fox Street. Disessor's parcel number there is 023-0-190-110. The general plan land use designation of the property is public quasi-public, that's P-L. The zoning classification of the property is public quasi-public, P-L. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Property owner is Gordon McKay, BSSMM. Accountants, the applicant is Alternative Energies, Inc., Chris Frye, representative of California Athletic Club's Eric Schmitz. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So, before you tonight is a project, as you just read into the record, that comprises of solar arrays, carports to support the solar arrays, a microturban, and some work underneath the drip line of protected trees and removal of two protected trees. The Ojai Valley Athletic Club is a 7.09 acre site, which currently houses an existing athletic facility, which includes a gym, various tennis courts and swimming pools. It is at 409 Fox Street, which is immediately south of the Ojai Valley Trail. Or the other, I think it's north, isn't it? But anyhow, adjacent to, no, I guess it's south, right? Adjacent to and northwest of the Wild Tennis Academy and predominantly surrounded by recreational and residential uses. So, as we said, the applicant proposes to install five carport structures with various heights and install a photovoltaic modules on the roof of these carport structures. Installation of a microturban within a new equipment pad, and this is within an existing chain link security enclosure behind, or I guess the security enclosure is new, but behind an existing six-foot wood fence you'd see out there that houses most of the pool equipment. And under an existing 13-foot tall shade structure and removal of 17 trees, two of which are protected in accordance with City of Ojai's municipal code, and work within the drip line of a third protected tree. So, staff has outlined the staff report here and kind of broken it down. And I won't go into that sort of elaborate detail, but the carports and some of the information, the microturbines, the tree removal. And then we have the general plan compatibility of the project and the zoning ordinance compatibility. We have provided for you, as we always do when you have a design review permit, the general findings and parameters that you should be reviewing when you're looking at the project. We've also provided for you the floor area ratio and setback analysis, et cetera, et cetera. Would like to point out that as a PL property, there are no hard set standards. If you see in the table, it says to be determined by the Planning Commission. You have a lot of leeway and discretion in this zone district. And so, staff has just provided for you the table and that detail so that you can look more or less at the project as an overall project and whether you think it meets what the setback should be, given the location of the project and its position next to residential or adjacent uses. And so, with that, we just would just like to just talk a little bit about some of the issues, and that is trash enclosure. They do have a trash enclosure and staff, municipal code does require that it be covered when you do a remodel such as this, so they haven't proposed that. We put it as a condition. We're not asking them to change significantly the trash enclosure, ergo, we don't think it needs to come back for Planning Commission for you to see a cover. So, we're hoping that you approve this with the condition that they'll just do a cover that matches the existing trash enclosure. We do point out that, that city records point out are, have determined that there should be 108 parking spaces on site. Current code would require a much higher parking, provision of parking to meet the demand of this use. But over time, it has been approved that way, so it is legitimately a legal non-conforming use. So, and they are not proposing to restrict any parking spaces. You know, the posts and the carports have all been designed to, you know, with multiple constraints in mind, one, fire separation, two, provision of parking, you know, access through the drive aisles, et cetera. So, it has been designed to not impact parking. So, that really isn't an issue, although we provide the analysis for you. Lighting, they are taking out some lighting and replacing, providing new LED lighting underneath the new carport structures that will have to be dark sky compliant. The existing lighting that isn't being attached by this project will remain non-compliant with the dark sky. As we provided for you in here, doesn't meet the threshold to ask for them to retrofit it. That has been requested by the, some of the neighbors that are to the back. One of the statements made by the neighbor is that, you know, with the cutting down trees and you've seen, they've seen trees cut down with a while project and then now this one, that the light just becomes more, you know, noticeable, an intrusion into their residential. But we did explain to them that while they can make that request of the Planning Commission, this applicant is not required to retrofit their existing lighting, other than that, that they're, the new that they're installing. The project does have a landscape plan and, as we said, there doesn't appear to be any issues with landscape plan. The main details has been the tree removal. We provide for you the analysis of, one, the two protected trees, the value of those protected trees. And the applicant is requesting that he be allowed, or they be allowed to use that value, which is fairly significant, $28,730, to do work on the property, i.e. not replant. They have a very large urban forest on that property. They don't need new plant, new trees per se in the parking lot because they're putting carports there. So, to use that value and not pay it in an alue fee to the city, but use that value and those funds to do work on site that they need to do to protect some of the large oaks they have on the site. And I think that's a worthwhile cause. We certainly do want them, to encourage them to do that. So, that's one of the special mitigations that they've requested. And I know in previous tree reports that have come to you, you understand the issue of the different options that are available to you when you're doing mitigation for removal of trees. We have asked them to provide the value of the third tree they're doing work underneath, and that's just to give a baseline value to that tree should something happen during construction that actually harms the tree. Then we would have a baseline knowledge of what the value of that tree is. And so, I think with that, the other only, other outstanding issue is noise. The applicant's plans indicate 65 dBs at 33 feet with the microturban. They are implementing a silencer on it that brings it down to 35 dBs, which is, you know, much quieter than I talk. So, it's a very, it's going to be very quiet on that property. We also, and as you know, have a letter on your diocentate for the neighbors, you know, issues about noise. We ask, we provided one modification to condition number 42 for you tonight, which just says that, you know, they have to do an analysis, statistical analysis, to demonstrate they're meeting what their specs are in their plans they've submitted to us and that we reviewed. And we made that change. Instead of it having to be compliant with code, we're asking that it be compliant with the project description that they provided to us, which is 35 dBs, you know, approximate at 33 feet from where the microturban is installed. And I spoke to the applicant's representative and they're fine with that. That is what they call out in their plans. And the neighbor that I spoke to was fine with that also. So, that seems like an appropriate modification to make to that condition. And finally, we just point out that the applicant did do a phase one for cultural resources and that we have, they're compliant with the current policies that the city has for Native American cultural resources. And we did have a consultation with the tribe and we have placed appropriate conditions on as necessary for that. And then finally, there's just an issue of the public art. As we know, any project with a value of $300,000 or greater is subject to the city's public art. There are exceptions for non, you know, that get you out of the provision of public art, such as affordable housing or historic. The city does not have one for green projects like this. And so, you know, maybe that would be something that people might have considered, but it's not there. So, even though it seems like they're doing something of value, it still may qualify for the public art. And with that, I just, I'm open to any questions. I think that really concludes it. And it looks like the applicant has a, you know, actual presentation they want to give you and I'll let them do the fine details.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time, Commissioners?
Is the mitigation spelled out? In other words, how they would apply that mitigation to protect the trees that are in the wash? In other words, is that something that we need to clarify tonight?
Let me look it up in, seven. The mitigation would be 21 and it just says, "A special tree mitigation plan shall be submitted, which details the use of this money to stabilize the four protected oak trees that have exposed roots due to erosion." The special tree mitigation plan, shall include specifics on the work to be done, the value of the work, monitoring of the work and inspections by the City of Ojai. We put this in, we put, what we did was we put in 21 and 22. We gave them an out. As you know, or may not know, this is a solar project, so they're looking to complete by the end of the year to be qualified for the rebate. We wouldn't put anything in there that's going to hold them up from moving forward. So, the, we're hoping that the mitigations were with enough flexibility that they can inaugurate their project, start working on it, and then give us the mitigation plan. If they need to, they can always pay the fee. So, that's kind of how it's worded. So, you know, it's really up to them to come up with a plan of how they're going to do it. We didn't want them to have to do that at this point because they needed to move forward through the entitlement.
And then, and then, do you sign off on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Right.
But is that something we can, I guess that's where I'm, that's what I'm driving at. If we can kick that can down the road in terms of your discretion. Okay.
This is another question about the mitigation. Just kind of a general question. In general, would it be the property owner's responsibility to take care of the heritage trees, no matter what was going on, whether they're getting a permit or not? So, I'm just kind of wondering, I'm not opposed to the mitigation, but where do you draw the line between, okay, now we're doing a new project and we're going to be removing some trees that need to get mitigated and comparing that to general maintenance that should probably be happening on the property anyway?
Well, I think that's a really good point. I think that that's more visionary than what we're doing tonight. You know, that's something whether or not the city wants to make people responsible for the maintenance of their trees as it is today. Generally speaking, we don't see that. We see that, we mostly see people that come in when their trees are already at a point they can't be helped. So, from the, from the, from the staff's perspective, we appreciate the fact that they're actually being proactive and willing to go out there and do that, do the work on the protected, protect the oaks. This particular site in and of itself, I think, is unique and you need to look at all the factors. One, most of the trees are taken down, are very small in size, and they're taking them down to do a green project. They also, in the aggregate, have a lot of trees on their property. And one of them in particular that they want to save, I think, is a fairly large oak. So, I think to make them, one, replant is just, you know, they already have a significant number of trees on that property, so that seems a bit.
Yeah, I was suggesting that they, that was, they had to do that.
Another point to keep in mind is that there is a general rough tree maintenance requirement, but it's difficult to enforce because it's enforced if we get so, if the tree gets so far down the road that the city has to come remove it. This provides a hard dollar amount, minimum spending on their tree maintenance they have to do upfront, which is significantly greater than what I would expect is the minimum required to meet the code. Another point to keep in mind.
All right, thank you.
And I would just only also add that getting someone to value the tree that they're doing work underneath is a new step in the right direction, too. Because we've seen this, too, where people do work within the drip line, three years later they come in and they want to take the hazardous tree out for free. So, you know, they're, they're being very cooperative and establishing a baseline and then they will have to be very cognizant about the work they've done under any protected tree. So, I think, I think the mitigations are moving towards that very proactive maintaining your urban forests, but I think, you know, the money would be well spent.
Thank you.
I have one more question from Ms. Wald. As far as the public art component goes, in order for them to get a, if everything goes through and they're approved, would the public art component preclude them in this case from getting, until they satisfy that requirement, until getting a building permit?
That is true.
Do we have the ability to, in this case, since time is of the essence, I understand the rebates expire on December 31st, do we have the ability to defer the public art requirement for, I don't know, for 30 days or something?
I don't know, the, what? Right. Yeah, he's prompting me. Council can. I have, in the past, asked for people to bond for it and that hasn't gone over well with others in the community because they, obviously, you have to go, you know how long the process takes, you sit on the board. But at this point, only council can. And they could certainly go to council and request that. That's, that's something that council could do.
All right. I would encourage the applicant to keep that in mind because the public art process can take a little bit of time.
Let me just, let me just add on to that, too, though, that we did, have spoken to the applicant previous to writing the report. They said the value of the project was $250,000. That's what they told staff and that was why we have the condition worded as if it's over 300, it hasn't been determined. It's a very awkward process because the valuation of the project is determined once you pull a building permit, not, not through the planning entitlement phase. So, it may be that they, they don't, they don't reach that threshold.
That's it. We'll hear from the applicant's rep. Please come forward and.
My name is Chris Frye. I'm CEO of Alternative Energy Incorporated. I'm very happy to have with me John Foster, archaeologist, is here as well, to answer any questions that may come up, and Bill Mellett. And it's been a pleasure working with them. There's not a lot, really, I can add to what Kathleen said. She's been, everybody's been great working with us and bringing this project to this point. I just brought in three, you know, kind of props. I do know, and we're very cognizant of the fact, that it's, it's kind of a counterintuitive to remove trees to put in solar. And whether it's in the middle of Los Angeles or wherever it is, we've always tried to minimize that. And we did do quite a bit of study and work. We worked with the, the fire department was involved. And then, of course, the setback was a, was an issue, too. And I think we hopefully had a happy medium on everything. But this is something, you know, the first one, it just kind of shows the equivalent. The size of the system is about 100,000, 110,000 kilowatts. We're going to produce about 195,000 kilowatt hours per year. And so, those are just the equivalents of that. And so, some of it has to do with carbon sequestered, some is CO2 emissions and some is greenhouse gas. It was recommended, if I may, and just switch one out. So, it was recommended, and maybe what I can do is just put this here and you can kind of look at them together, that, that's what a microturban, excuse, sorry. That's what a microturban, you know, looks like. That does not have our silencers on it. In a, in a past professional career, I did a lot of vapor extraction systems, environmental remediation systems, and we'd have to put very loud equipment, sometimes right next to an apartment building. So, we became fairly experienced in silencing things down much louder than what that's going to be. So, I went back to companies that I've been dealing with for 25 years and hadn't talked with in many years. And so, we are going to silence it down. And it's something we do know how to do. We know there's maximum back pressures that a machine like that can tolerate and whatnot. But on the E-S-L is essentially the carports and then behind it, you'll see the top of the microturban. And we purposely put it amongst the pool equipment. And at first, actually, we had it outside the wall and then it, it just, a light bulb went off one day when we were having an engineering meeting. And well, why wouldn't we put it with the equipment that's already making noise there? And it gets it out from plain view. So, so, I'm an engineer, not much of a public speaker, so that's about all I have to say. But unless there's any questions, and my professional colleagues are here as well.
I have a question for you. In the terms of operating the, the operation times of the microturban, is that just going off when the sun is out or is it, is it something that circulates through the evening? What are the timeframes?
They're designed to be a 24/7 machine. And the only drawback is when you can't use the heat. Because we're going to take the heat and we're going to put it into the pool and the potable water to offset the amount of natural gas that is coming in. So, it's 65 kilowatts of power.
Mm-hmm.
And it's pretty steady, 24/7.
Okay. And you're confident of the 35 dB level once that silencer's on there?
Yes, I'm, I'm pretty conservative about those kind of things. And if you look in the specs, and we're, we're not using our numbers, we're actually using numbers from industrial, the Industrial Silencer Company.
Okay.
Their name escapes, I think I said it earlier, now I forgot it. But, so, we're using, in other words, we're starting with Capstone's numbers. And then, you know, and then we're using universal silencers. And it just happens that, just as very coincidentally, that the two companies are already working together on a standard silencing package, long since before we contacted them. So.
Was it 35 dB, 30 feet from the unit? Was that the figure?
Yes, that's what, yes.
So, at 33 feet, so at the unit, it's 65 or something like that? At the unit?
If you didn't silence it at all, it would come out at 65 decibels.
Oh, but, but if you're standing right next to it with the silencer on, what is it? What's, what's the decimal that it emits?
Now, I don't have, because they always do it with distance intuitively and kind of knowing what I know, it'd probably be about 45 to 50, maybe.
So, like an air conditioner, a regular air conditioner is like 85 or something like that?
About, but you know what it's like is the, I took my own dB meter, very unscientific, but I walked around and put it with the pool pumps. And the pool pumps were running just under 50.
Okay.
So, that was our goal, is to try, because the, of course, neighbors are very important, but the owners of the club certainly don't want the guests or the members to be sitting by the pool. sitting by the pool, and now nobody wants to sit by that area because it's so loud. So we're very, very sensitive to, to, you know, maintain, not noticing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Haven't seen any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
So this is a, a public hearing, and I have before me a couple cards from Pat Tumamite. Pat, you're number one.
Good evening, Mr. Foster, commissioners. My name is Patrick Tumamite, Native Chumash representative. As a tribal member, I have to represent just for myself. My sister's not here tonight, she's the one that is, that, as the director, speaker for our tribe. My concerns are is the idea that the, the impact of the, the site and the, the large capacity of which this is taking place here, and some of the removals of the trees, the oak trees in Native Chumash culture, a lot of the sites that you'll find oak trees, and they're, they're protected not only because they're an oak tree, because there's a lot of cultural resources within that boundary of the site. So that's one thing about the trees. I, I need to know whether there's stump removal, because that impacts the area in regards to the archaeological and cultural resources in the area. Also, too, I'd like to add the idea that monitoring should be represented by the local tribe, so I think that's it.
I believe that's in the conditions, correct, Kathleen?
Yes, sir. 60 is our, our standard monitoring, which requires Native American Chumash representative and an archaeologist, and it includes any, all earth disturbances, including tree removal, excavation for footings, placement of fill, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your, your, your time. Thanks.
Thanks, Pat. Don Teating?
Good evening, commissioners. Don Teating, North Signal Street. I just want to say that I'm thrilled to see a review of this project for cultural resources. So I thank staff and the consideration and the work that was done by the archaeologist, as well as the consultation with the Native Americans. I just wanted to bring your attention to the conditions of approval found in attachment A on page 11 regarding historic resource protection considerations. Just two minor points to hopefully eliminate any potential confusion down the line. What's before you are listed, appear to be listed, 13 conditions, and I think in reality there's really only five or six conditions. It looks like what happened was conditions 52 through 59, which are all related to discovery of potential remains, should actually be collapsed into one condition. So it looks like there are a lot more conditions than what are really being required. So just to, just again, to eliminate any confusion, that that be condensed. And then also one question, condition 64 appears to be an incomplete sentence. So I'm not sure if there's additional information that's being meant to be conveyed there regarding the findings of the archaeologist and any recommendations. So clarification on that would be appreciated.
Would you like to address that, 64?
64, there was, so we found ourselves in a position with the cultural resources consultation that the applicant's archaeologist actually asked for no monitoring, but the tribe actually, an outcome of our consultation with the tribe was that we actually wanted to have a monitor on there. So, so because there's a little bit of contradiction, we just put that in there. In addition to the above conditions, the applicant should comply. In other words, it's not in lieu of, you know, he still has to require, he still, if there's something in the report, but, but the report doesn't then circumvent the conditions, that was the intent, doesn't, doesn't circumvent the conditions that we agreed to put on.
Yeah, the issue is that it's an incomplete sentence. It's not, at least in the version that went out to the public, page 12.
Page 13?
Uh, yes, page 13 on my copy starts with drainage conditions.
Oh, no. No, it actually says, "Prepared by Greenwood Associates, dated September 2nd, 2015, the applicant shall print these requirements on all grading and construction plans."
Okay, that wasn't con...
Sorry.
In what?
It's, and it's in our...
It's in our packet.
Correctly, what she has, or...
On the website.
Okay, the web, website.
Not on the website?
No, what was provided to the public.
I apologize, but yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
So we're just trying to make sure that the applicant's very clear, that he can't just go by what's on the report. These conditions are in addition to what the report required from him.
And then just one additional comment that Pat was trying, I think, to convey was the requirement, as it's stated right now, is for a Native American Chumash representative, and I think he was requesting a local, a, a local Chumash monitor be present, as opposed to just a, a Chumash representative. There's a distinction between the two in terms of experience and training.
And what options do we have?
Well, we have been refining the, these, the wording all along.
Policy, yeah.
So I, so I don't know if we want to use the word local, or we want to use Venturino, Barbarino? Is that what we use?
There's options here. One option would be to do, just add the word local on the fourth line down in condition 60, so it would read...
Condition number...
Number 60 on page 12.
Okay.
So that the first main sentence would read, "The owner applicant shall have all earth disturbances, including tree removal, excavation for footings, and placement of fill monitored by a city-approved archaeologist and a local Native American Chumash representative." Or you could modify it to be a Native American Chumash representative of the Barbarino-Venturino Band of Mission Indians. I think that's six to one, half dozen to the other, because that is the local, that is the group in Ojai.
What do they say?
Yeah.
The concern is that the, the monitor that comes in knows the area, knows where sites are in the area, and is sensitive to that.
Right, as opposed to, because the Chumash tribe extends fairly broad area.
All right.
That makes, Ms. Wald has recommended consideration of referencing the Barbarino-Venturino Band of Mission Indians rather than the term local, as it captures our, the rough intent of what I understand the mistating is asking for, and it shies away from the term local, which could be interpreted a variety of ways.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Chair, is, is that the intention of the, of City Council's ad hoc committee so far today on this subject?
The ad hoc committee hasn't made any recommendations on any particular projects. This is consistent with the current policies under discussion. I would shy away from relying on that solely because the current policies under discussion have not been reviewed or adopted by the City Council as a whole. Does that answer your question?
Well, I just think it's really important, I can elaborate that, on having the local or the tri, the band of tribe, because they're the ones that are going to know the cultural resources here, so it's all interwoven together. I mean, it's really important, and so I think that's a good change.
So this is something that we'll take in consideration in future items as they come forward, right?
Yeah, we'll make sure that.
Okay. All right. I don't have before me any further cards, but if anyone would like to make a comment from the public, they're welcome to come up at this time and state your name and...
My name is John Foster. I'm the archaeologist on the project. I just wanted to state that Julie Tumamite will be retained to do the Native American component of the project, and she is a, the tribal elder of the group, of the Venturino Native group, so she will be part of this project and, and is a local representative here. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. No one else is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting and open up for discussion amongst ourselves, the commission here. Commissioner Lajowski, would you like to start us off? Your comments?
I'd like to hear some more august discussion from my fellow commissioners before I weigh in on...
Okay, then let's ping pong over to Mr. Merk, Commissioner Merk.
I have nothing, no. This looks like a fine project. I, I was out at the site, I kind of looked around, and I think it's going to be fairly well screened from the surrounding areas, and it's a great addition to the club, and so I don't have any objections to it. I think we should go ahead with it.
Yeah, I agree with John. It's a, it looks like an excellent project. It's putting our money where our mouth is when we talk about sustainability and green-type projects. It's a great use of parking lot, otherwise that has no other use. The trees are a consideration. I did look at some of the mitigation issues that were, that that property had, and there are some serious situations with some very large oaks, which may in fact be some of the largest oaks in the valley. When you see them, they're just majestic, and I believe it's San Antonio Creek, right, that runs through there? Does anybody know? Is that, Bill, is that San Antonio Creek?
Tributary.
Is it Tributary of the creek?
Okay.
Yeah, it runs through the property, and unfortunately, and this is the area which they're going to place the mitigated funds, I think some, we talked about maintenance issues earlier, whether the owner is responsible for maintenance issues. And this is a, a national, a natural resource, the creek itself, in a wash, that's, that's directed naturally, maybe, but maybe it was redirected, because there is a bridge there, toward a bank that undercuts these oaks. I believe that if we don't do something with those oaks for their protection, we may lose them if we do get the El Nino that we may get this year. So I, I'm real focused on the mitigation. I think the project is straightforward and great. I think there's, again, enough trees, it's sheltered, all the other, all the other things comply, the noise seems minimal. That's, that's my opinion. I like to talk about the mitigation myself. I would like to, you know, talk further about that.
Okay. At, at this time, or...
Yeah, I would like to find out what, what their plan of mitigation is.
Okay, well, let's have the applicant come forward, then. I guess I have to reopen the public hearing for that, but it is officially open.
I'm Bill Mallett. I'm the project landscape architect and arborist. What we're proposing for that is using natural boulders to retain that existing slope that's been eroded, hopefully to save one particularly large valley oak that's being undercut, probably 50% of it's undercut already. There's three other smaller oaks in that area that are also at danger of being undercut by the creek, so that's, that's the start of our mitigation. We don't have a plan yet, that's something we're going to be working on in the near future, very near future.
My concern is that we wait and we lose those oaks. I really am concerned about that. If anyone in this audience goes there and sees this, they'll see it immediately, and that's a, that's one of, and we talk about the, the appreciation for oaks, both spiritually and physically. Go out there and take a look at this. This is a serious situation. It's not something that can just wait. If we get the El Nino this year, we could lose those trees.
I, I agree.
So I, I don't think this is a small, a small thing. So I would like to see a plan of action.
It's time-sensitive, is what I'm hearing.
It is, it's very time-sensitive.
And I agree, I, I was, you know, amazed by how much exposure, root exposure was, and such a tremendous tree. I mean, it's...
It's a, it's a specimen, you know, probably one of the nicest trees in the valley, in all brightness. In your mitigation, what are your odds? What are you, what are you thinking? Can you save that tree?
Oh, yeah, I thi, I think so. The timing is the biggest issue to me with that, you know? Because we're in a creek and the...
Before it starts flooding out?
Yeah.
The potential for flooding, that sort of thing?
In the approval process to be able to work within the creek bank, potentially be an issue.
That's a question I have for Kathleen Wald. The jurisdiction of working in that creek, are we dealing now with fish and game, wildlife, fish and game? Who are we dealing with in order to deal with that creek?
I don't know. Do you know, Steve?
We're going to have to do some additional analysis of this, if the commission directs us to do that, but this may be a red line channel for the county flood control district that will have to work with them. And of course, anytime you're making any kind of improvements, you have to work with the, the state agencies and normally fish and game and Army Corps, maybe. And so that's all going to have to be worked out, and there's some engineering aspects of that are going to have to be worked out. But I, I think based on the urgency, that there may be some relief there, but that's something that is going to have to take some effort on, on both sides, government side and the applicant's side.
Bill, what about the idea of redirecting the creek around the tree? Because there's that field right to the north side of it.
That's essentially what I'm thinking is the plan.
That is the ultimate cure of it, because it literally, what happens is this creek just hits this root bank and then has to make an L-turn around it, and it's just pounding away at that. And even if we build boulders there, the abutment, it's going to look very unnatural, first of all. And it, you know, it will work, but it'll be unnatural, I think, if we can redirect the stream.
Yes, it's redirecting and widening...
Yep.
...the streams, so the velocity of the water moving through there is not...
So how do we get through this bureaucratic mess of trying to get an approval to do something I think is somewhat urgent?
Well, the, that level of work, redirecting an entire stream, also would require a complex sequel analysis that can't, it can be expedited to an extent, but it cannot be approved tonight, and it cannot be accomplished immediately without careful bureaucratic navigation. Because in addition to the county, the state, we're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, probably dealing with a couple of the county agencies. It's accomplishable, but it's a, it's a matter of city and OVAC working together to thread the right needles. And the urgency, we have, the usefulness of the El Nino provides that urgency push that we can use to push through, expedite some of the permit processing. But...
I certainly would like to see someone do an analysis on which plan would work as far as the mitigation goes. I, I believe the abutment would work as well, but I think both of them would require working with those agencies, correct? So either way...
Right, and this is, this is in part why we built in the condition with the requirement that they come back with a plan, because if they come back with a plan that's rerouting the creek, that could not be approved by Ms. Wald, that would have to be approved by probably this commission through, through an EIR.
Right, but my concern is that we wait through the, we're going to lose that tree. That tree is going to be gone.
Well, and to some extent, we're, we're stuck with the requirements. We still have to comply with sequel, we still have to comply with those requirements.
Yeah, it's funny how they can, they'll, they'll prove anything when it's an emergency, just like Arnes grade, when it washed out, grade out the creek. There was no, no issue there.
Right.
But when we have, we're trying to be proactive here, they're just, you know, they're going, everybody's going to just pass it on, and we're going to lose this tree.
Well, we can push forward to some extent on some of these deadlines, and we can use that. The clear evidence, which I wanted also to note for the record, attachment C, page 7, has a clear picture of what you've been describing from your site visit, so that any member of the public who would like to see it can see it from the record. It is evident that this is a problematic tree and a problematic undercutting of the bank, of the bank. I think we can use that to push the permits through, but we just guarantee...
Okay, well, I just want to...
And it can't be done tonight.
Expedite that process as much as we can.
And I've been directed by the, the client, the owner, to move as quickly as possible on this. They're, they're interested in saving that tree, also.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Summers, did you say that it, because it's, it would require EIR evaluation, that it would, has to come back to the planning commission?
If the project proposed was to reroute the entire creek, that would almost certainly require an EIR. Maybe not. Maybe if we find the right, we build the right case for the right kind of exemption under emergency, maybe not.
Right. I'm wondering if there's a way just to keep it at a director's level decision, you know, to expedite...
It would depend on the exact parameters of the proposed application.
Uh-huh.
And because...
So that could be crafted, perhaps, in a way that we could accomplish that?
I don't want to speculate too much at the moment on how we would craft it. We would work together with the applicant.
It depended on the...
We would structure, there's ways to structure what we're doing to take advantage of various emergency exemptions, if we can build the right case for it. It may not require an EIR, but it might. And I realize it's a bit of a 50/50 answer.
And it's, I guess the concern is we're heading into the holiday season, we, we don't have planning commission meetings towards the end of the, this month, or December, and we're going to be in January, and...
From a realistic perspective, boulders could be dropped by the end of the year, the creek could not be rerouted by the end of the year. That's not possible.
Mm-hmm.
Just from thinking about the permits required to do that.
Okay.
That's not possible. Because in... Because it not, that's not on, that's not a city being slow angle, that's, the feds won't touch, won't let us do that without careful analysis.
Got it.
Versus putting boulders up against that edge of the creek, that can be done faster.
Mm-hmm. So it's a temporary mediation that will hopefully allow us to stave off the.
Temporary emergency rock stabilization placement versus creek rerouting.
So can we condition it based on Plan A, Plan B? For instance, if Plan A were, were the plan of choice to create an abutment there, that we can allow Kathleen or you to make that executive decision without having to come back to planning commission?
The current language is vague enough to accomplish that.
Good. Thank you.
So, Bill, you might want to consider also, they're quick and easy to build at the Gabions.
Right.
You know, it's just the wire cage, and they built them very successfully on 150 and up Ojai when we had the last flood, and the road is washing out.
Mm-hmm. That's a good idea.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking of, too. Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick, a quick question. So would the next step be that you're, are you going to be consulting an engineer to figure out?
Most likely.
Your next step? Okay. I'm just, good to hear that. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're back to discussion, and I believe Rosalie.
I concur with my fellow commissioners. I think it's a great project. I'm excited to, I, I thought this room was going to be full of people objecting, and maybe you're shy, but I'm really glad, they're not shy, I haven't experienced this public being shy, so I'm really happy that this is being supported, and I'm really glad that the applicant addressed, was willing to address the concerns for noise up front, and I think it's great. Kathleen, is there any way we can, and maybe we don't need to, but is there any way we can make a hierarchy of due firsts in terms of protecting that tree? Is that something that makes any sense to, to make sure that something is done before the end of the year?
Certainly, you can modify that condition to ask them to do some kind of remediation measures to immediately protect it, you know, and to come back as soon as possible, you know, how, certainly. I think that it's written to give them flexibility, but if you want to tighten it up and tell them they have to come back with some emergency remediation within X amount of days, certainly you could do that.
Kathleen?
Well, I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I think it's a great project, and I also wanted to thank the applicant and staff for giving us such a thorough packet, and I really appreciate the breakdown on the, the conditions. It's, I mean, you know, you look at it and you go, oh my gosh, there's, I don't know what, there's 60 some odd conditions in here, 70, excuse me, 79. But the fact that it's all broken down, and it's very, it's easy to access the information, it's very clear, and I, I just wanted to say once again, I think it's well done, and we found a couple minor things, but that's okay. I appreciate the, the use of the solar. I too have the considerations about the trees. I went out to the site. The largest oak is going to be hopefully preserved and monitored during construction, so I feel good about that. The other two oaks were, were very small, as much as I dislike taking them out, I, I can see the benefit, and I'm for the mitigation, so thank you.
Lawrence?
Again, a, a good staff report. I think the tree report was really well done. It was very comprehensive, and it actually explained everything. It was very nicely done. I liked the landscape plan, too. This was a good, and, and again, I concur with my fellow commissioners. That's it.
Great project. I support it. Looks good. If you're doing solar at $2 a watt, sign me up.
It is a great project. The, we're always up here talking about sustainability one way or another, and environmental sustainability, and to, they have the resources and the opportunity to really make the sun work for them in this case, and I think the offset is, is huge in terms of energy savings. And they're being, you know, very meticulous about, you know, their regard for the environment as well, as we discussed about the mitigation in terms of the trees and that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm all on board with that. So with that being the case, if there's no further discussion, I would like, someone needs to craft a motion here.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the motion. Kathleen, is the decibel level in the conditions already? Because I saw this, this little report that we got after the fact, this letter from a concerned citizen.
We want you to use that one.
You got it. That's what I want to know.
And for clarity's sake, the proposed condition number 42, which was on the dais, and replaces the existing condition 42, incorporates the decibel levels that are stated in the plans on page, it's the second to last page at the plan sets, page P1, in the little box on the left, it cites the decibel levels of 35 feet, 35 decibels at 33 feet. That's the language that condition 42 incorporates. We did not restate it in condition 42, because it's in much greater detail than in the plans, and so makes sense to just incorporate the plans directly. So it, in a nutshell, does incorporate the 35 decibels, but it's through the plans.
So is this to be, take the place of the 42 that's in our current?
Correct. The recommendation is that that 42 replace the other 40, the original 42.
Okay. Got it.
I would like to draft, draft a condition. I'm looking at 21, 22, and 23, the tree preservation condition, that somehow clearly states that we're in favor of mitigation of those oak trees, and that we want, and it's an urgent situation, it needs to be dealt with in a timely manner. I don't know how to craft that. Maybe Kathleen, you can help me with that one?
So what, what do you, I think that 21 addresses the special mitigation.
Right.
If you want him to say, a two-phase special mitigation, one would be that within 30 days of entitlement, excuse me, entitlement tonight, the applicant shall submit a tree, emergency, I don't know what you want to call it, what do we want to call it?
One approach, one approach might be to have the applicant submit a mitigation plan within two weeks of project approval.
Right.
And, which identifies a method to stabilize the four trees as expeditiously as possible. It conveys the commission's sense of urgency, but it reflects the reality that all we can control is when they submit. We can't control the other agencies' approvals.
And then a second.
And then two, sorry, it's supposed to be, identifies a method to first stabilize the trees as expeditiously as possible, then develop a permanent.
A temporary stabilization of the trees, and then a permanent.
And yeah, and then a permanent stabilization mechanism.
Temporary stabilization.
So does that become a standalone condition, or is it like 21B, or?
I think you could just add that as a sentence at the end of 21.
Mm-hmm. Just add it into the language there at number 21?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the rest of the language of 21, I think, is where we want it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's just see if we can go at this. Okay. Sorry. I make a motion to approve design review permit DRP 14-20 and tree, tree permit T 15-50 for the installation of five new carports with photovoltaic models, microturbine, and the removal of two protected trees that work under a drip line of the third protected tree to facilitate the installation of the Ojai Valley Athletic Club located 409 Fox Street. With the revised condition number 42, do I need to read that or just put that in? Let's submit that as it's written.
Yes.
And with the added condition that the client submit, the applicant submit a mitigation plan within two weeks of the approval of the permit, correct? That clearly indicates a temporary stabilizing plan for that tree, an immediate and urgent plan to stabilize that tree with a long-term plan to permanently stabilize it, something like that.
I think that captures it.
Okay.
Could I add something? Well, I mean, when you're done, I had one more thing to add to the conditions.
No, you need the number 60, you need to add that.
Yeah, number 60.
The.
Yeah. Line four, adding the Venturino Barberino.
Okay. Why don't you state that?
Okay. So this is attachment A. This would be condition 60, and so line four, I'll, let me just read kind of the end of line three, but it says city, let's see, feel monitored by a city-approved archaeologist and, and then we're going to include a Venturino Barberino, and then it goes into the existing language, Native American Chumash representative. Okay.
Is that?
That's it?
That's complete?
Let's double check.
I think that covered all our amendments, right?
Free conditions, yeah.
Okay.
The noise.
There was also the consolidation of 53 to.
I don't think we needed to consolidate them.
Don't want to do that?
There were just, that was just a note that they were long, they were all describing the same thing, so.
Mm-hmm. So do I have a second? I will second that motion. Okay. Further discussion at this point? I think we're ready for a roll call.
Merk?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Zavilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Foster?
Yeah.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Zajowski?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
For official adjusting term, roll on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So our next item on tonight's agenda is a concept review. CR 15-05 for a new 30 pace, 30-space boutique RV park, landscaping and accessory structures, and a new retail cafe building at 1202 East Ojai Avenue, formerly known as the bowling alley. The assessor parcel number there is 028-0073-100. The general planned land use designation of the site is general commercial, and the zoning classification is general commercial C1. Environmental review under SEQA is not required for conceptual review. Upon submission of formal applications, the city will complete an environmental analysis pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The property owner, Bazano Trust. The applicant is Mesa Lane Partners. Our representative is Tony Tomicello. Staff?
So I'll just go briefly over the concept review staff report. As you know, when we encourage people to come forward with concept reviews, to get feedback from the planning commission, we hold these items more as a workshop-type thing between the audience and the applicant and yourselves, so that we have a robust discussion about the pros and cons of the project. So staff really puts together just really a minimal staff report, give you kind of the basics of what's going on with the project description. We don't do a lot of analysis, because we want that to occur in, in the form tonight. So with that said, we would just say that yes, it is the redevelopment of the bowling alley site, which has been vacant, as you know, for a very long time, out on East Ojai Avenue. It is a boutique RV park resort. I will say that staff has fielded a lot of questions about this issue of whether it is a residential mobile park, mobile home park, or whether it is transient. This project, as we were informed by the applicant, is a transient use, is a hotel use, a commercial use, not a residential use. Staff did do some research, the city attorney and I, myself, did do some research this afternoon about whether or not it qualified as a mobile home park. In our code, it's very specific, and it is not, based on the definitions that are provided in our code. So the way that this was provided for you today was with the understanding it's a C1 zone district. It does, I believe, in the housing element, also have the SPL overlay. They're not providing residential units. This is no way, shape, or form a residential unit project. Transient rental falls under the definition of a hotel and transient rent, hotel motels in our code. And with that, we just provided the kind of the basic standards that, that you would have, and, and once again, reminding you that when you're looking at a design review permit, and even with a concept review permit, we're looking for you to, to take into those findings, context, continuity, scale, design. And with that, we just provided you a basic idea of discussion items. And with that, I think I'll just conclude and let the applicant come up and give his presentation, and go ahead.
Any questions for staff?
You want me to read that into, into the record?
I just wanted, okay, sorry. Microphone. I just wanted to add one point. In terms of keeping in mind, the definition of mobile home that triggers certain requirements for mobile home parks is a mobile home bigger than 800 square feet. As I understand it, the proposal is that these will be smaller than that size, so they're not under the special rules for mobile homes, rather, and they're not under the rules for residential programs, because again, as proposed, it's less than 30-day stays. That bumps them into the bucket for hotel motel, which is defined as facilities with guest rooms or suites, provided with or without kitchen facilities, rented to the general public for transient lodging less than 30 days. Hotels provide access to most guest rooms from an interior walkway, and typically include a variety of services in addition to lodging, for example, restaurants, meeting facilities, personal services. Motels provide access to most guest rooms from an exterior walkway, also includes accessory guest facilities, e.g. swimming pools, tennis courts, indoor athletic facilities, accessory retail uses. As proposed, this use would be a motel, because it's, you walk up to the trailer, although as you will have already surmised, it's a bit of an odd one, because it's not your typical motel. Just wanted to provide that textual background.
Chair, I'm wondering, could I ask a question of staff? I'm wondering how, how does this fall in, what type of property tax would this pay?
It would pay commercial property tax, which would be assessed based on whenever they last sold it. As I understand it, the property is presently, presently in escrow. The buyer who has submitted this concept review would be the potential buyer. They haven't yet bought it. Their sale is in part contingent upon the outcome of tonight's discussions. That sale would trigger, presuming, back up, presuming that the sale is a complete transfer of the property at once, and is not structured otherwise, that would reset the value to be whatever the sale price is, which would then be the property tax assessed value of 1%. There are ways to structure it to avoid that. We'll presume so far that they're using the standard straight sale.
Thank you.
But there'd also be a transient tax if these were actually hotel rooms, right?
Right. If they were rented out, there would be a transient occupancy tax as well, which would be a city revenue source on top of the property tax.
But the units themselves are going to be on axles, and so they don't contribute as fixtures onto the property, correct?
That's correct, is if they made, Ms. Walt.
Need to hear what's going on here.
Yeah. Ms. Walt pointed out that the units themselves would not be taxed as part of the fixtures attached to the property, because they remain on the axles on the tires.
So we would have 30 proposed units of X amount of square footage that would not be paying property tax?
No, they would be paying property tax.
They just wouldn't have an incremental increase based on the installation of those units?
Okay. It doesn't, in other words, the assessed value is the land value and the value of the buildings.
And the transient tax stays in place.
The transient tax stays in place. That, that definition is broad enough to pick up this kind of a use as well.
Okay.
And from a city revenue perspective, the city benefits a significantly greater amount on transient occupancy tax than for most property tax, because of the property tax dollar is divided up, it's, as you'll recall from Prop 13, property tax is 1% of the assessed value, which is then divided up further between the county, the schools, special districts, and the city. We end up getting 14 cents per dollar of tax, which is 14 cents per dollar. Ms. Ward pointed out that the units themselves would not be taxed as part of the fixtures attached to the property, because they remain on the axles on the tires.
So, we would have thirty proposed units of X amount of square footage that would not be paying property tax?
No, they would be paying property tax.
They just wouldn't have an incremental increase based on the installation of those units?
Okay. It doesn't, in other words, the assessed value is the land value and the value of the buildings.
And the transient tax stays in place.
The transient tax stays in place. That, that definition is broad enough to pick up this kind of a use as well.
Okay.
And from a city revenue perspective, the city benefits a significantly greater amount on transient occupancy tax than for most property tax, because of the property tax dollar is divided up, it's, as you'll recall, from Prop thirteen, property tax is one percent of the assessed value, which is then divided up further between the county, the schools, special districts, and the city. We end up getting fourteen cents per dollar of tax, which is fourteen cents per dollar, one dollar per hundred of value. So, it's, the property tax doesn't tend, doesn't result in that much revenue to the city.
Thank you.
Looking at the C one zone, what other options do they have to develop that property? Not they in particular, but anyone. Is there, is there residential allowed in C one, or is it not allowed at all in C one? It doesn't say it is, but I'm just wondering if there's an extended definition here that's not on this, on our.
The way to, residential uses are not automatically allowed in C one. This property is also in the special housing overlay zone, for which residential uses are allowed by right, if they are affordable housing uses that meet the affordable housing definitions under the overlay zone.
Perfect, that's exactly what I want to know. Thank you.
Do you know off the cuff how many affordable housing units we could put on one-point-six acres? Just asking, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I don't, maybe you do, maybe you don't.
The, I was looking at this yesterday. The maximum density is twenty dwelling units per acre on affordable housing. It's structured to shoot for fifteen-ish dwelling units per acre, so one-point-three acres, whatever that works out to, eighteen, nineteen units?
At what minimum square?
And the city could increase that, based on the density, based on the affordable, affordability percentages. If you have a project that is, has X percent affordable at moderate income, you get Y density. If you have X percent affordable at very low income, you can get a higher density above those, above those levels. So, in part, the density calculations for an affordable housing project depend on the acreage and on the level of affordability.
Got it. But there's discretion from the city council?
City has some discretion.
No.
In terms of, well, it depends on how it's structured. I'll back up. If the applicant comes up with a project that fits the requirements, the minimum density, minimum, and is within the maximum density for a affordable housing overlay project, that is required to be proved by right. There is no discretion on that. If they come in with something that's above that, that picks up some discretion. Or if they come in with a project that requires some sort of city financial contribution, that picks up discretion. But if they come in with a project that's just a straight self-financed or federal financed or something that doesn't require city money, affordable housing project that meets the density requirements of the overlay housing zone, that is required to be proved by right, and there's no discretion to deny it. That's built into the housing element and the affordable housing overlay zone.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's hear from the applicant on that proposed project. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Foster, members of the commission. My name is Neil DePaula, and I'm the CEO of Mesa Lane Partners. We're just over the hill in Santa Barbara, and we're a small real estate development company, but we're not your typical real estate development company, for a few reasons. First, profit isn't our number-one motivation, and I know that's unusual to hear from a real estate developer, but it might put it in perspective when you hear that our backgrounds aren't typical for real estate developers either. None of us have finance or economics backgrounds. Our backgrounds are in environmental science and environmental planning. So, when we look at opportunities for redevelopment and planning challenges, we approach them from an environmental perspective first and foremost. And so, I think that really sets us apart at the, at the beginning. It also makes it really difficult for us to find projects, because we have kind of a complex sieve with which to decide what projects we should pursue and which ones not to. First, they have to have a demonstrated community benefit. And so, we go after projects that are blighted, that have been abandoned. We often look for old automobile infrastructure. We buy car washes, parking lots, old gas stations, where we can take our experience in the environmental fields and bring them up to a use that benefits the community. We kind of have this thing we talk about internally when we're looking at projects, how many collisions does it create? And what we mean by collisions, we're trying to get people to bump into each other. We're trying to create an authentic sense of community. It's like when you're sitting at Need Bakery, and one of your neighbors bumps into you, and you didn't know they were going to be there, and it spurs a conversation about something. It's these serendipitous connections. The projects we pick have to have some sense, some opportunity to create that, whether it's a fire pit or a new café or an outdoor dining opportunity, but that's the first sieve. The next is, we have to have a demonstrated environmental improvement with the project. So, our typical project is a multifamily mid-rise or high-rise. So, we build student housing, multifamily, multifamily housing hotels, and we've done projects in partnership with the U.S. Department of Energy that are on the bleeding edge of sustainability, integrating new technologies, or we're the first in class, phase-change drywall, multi-sided photovoltaics. Runs the gamut for some really, we could have, we could geek out and have an exciting conversation about sustainability, because it's kind of ingrained in our, in our DNA. And the, the final sieve, yes, we do care about the financial benefit. It's not the first thing we think about, but our investors aren't black-suited guys in a high-rise in New York. They're people that live right here in Ojai. They're people that live in Santa Barbara and in Ventura, and they're, and they're people who invest in our company and in our projects, not because they're looking for a return on their investment first and foremost, but they're looking to make the community a better place, and they know that we're going to do that. And they're going to get a return that's fair and reasonable, that's commensurate with the risk that we take when we pursue new projects. So, when we pursue a new project, like the one here in, in Ojai, we have the foresight to know that we don't know everything about the community. So, we do something else that's really unusual for developers. We listen. And so, over the last three months since we've been in contract on this property, we've spent a lot of time, and our team has hit the community, to talk to as many people as will talk to us about what they'd like to see. That's been neighbors, it's been business owners, nonprofit leaders, and whichever electeds would talk to us. And through those conversations, and we're not done, I might add, we're here today to continue that conversation, and I want to reiterate that we're not making a proposal today, we're just expressing ideas that we heard from those conversations, and here for feedback, to continue the conversation. And one day, we'll come back to you with a proposal that we think best integrates all those comments. But our process, as I mentioned, involves a tremendous amount of listening and discussions, and we sometimes get really good ideas, we sometimes get funny ideas from those conversations, and, and this was no different. We had a long Google Doc of comments that we've kind of recorded every conversation we had. And what we do, once we have those, those initial meetings, is we sit around as a team, and we say, okay, what are the commonalities? What are the things that, that people are saying the most? And so, from those things, we kind of circle the ones that we hear over and over, and we create goals. And so, that's what we started to do with this project. We began by creating three goals that respect, that reflect what we heard. And those goals are engage community, create a model for sustainability, and embrace locality. Now, engage community is something that I mentioned that's kind of, again, in our, in our DNA. The project that we're contemplating today reflects things that we heard people say, "I remember going to that bowling alley, and it was, it was a great way to, to hang out with my kids, hang out with my family, and have a nice evening." And so, people said, "It would be great if you could create some sort of passive recreational opportunity for the people that live here." And we kept hearing that loud and clear, that people wanted something that was meant for people who are, who are here, that live in Ojai, activities in the evening, activities on the weekends. And so, we, we next heard, again, again, sustainability, small space living. We heard some comments about affordable housing. We also heard comments about adaptive reuse. They said, "Hey, could you use that bowling alley building for something else? You know, how could you reuse that?" Because the greenest building you can build is one that's already there. So, we, we took that into account and got really excited about some opportunities that, that parts of that building could provide for a new proposal. And then, as I mentioned, embrace locality. People said, "You're not going to have any success in this community unless you partner with local businesses, unless you partner with local farms, unless you get locals involved in every part of the project." And so, we took that, that to heart. That's another reason why we're, why we're here tonight, trying to get more information from you about what you'd like to see. So, when we think, when we started thinking about our concept, first and foremost was reactivating the street and the street frontage there on East Ojai Avenue. A lot of people said, "When that bowling alley went out of business, closed down, it felt like the, the east end of Ojai Avenue shut down along with it." And so, the way we wanted to reinvigorate that, that part of the street is to create an engaging street frontage that has an ensemble of new buildings. One-story, Spanish and Western-style buildings that really follow suit with the beautiful architecture that you see elsewhere on Ojai Avenue in downtown. So, we wanted to create a beautiful facade that started to invite people inside. And so, as you, maybe if you flip over a couple slides to the, maybe the next slide, you see the rhythm of, of buildings, and we wanted to start connecting people inside the, the project. So, as you walk into the buildings, it might be, there might be a café there, or a juice stand, or a, a small café. As you walk past that, there's an open-air pavilion that has a fire pit, and it kind of invites you, you in to perhaps have a glass of wine, sit by the fire with your, with your family in the evening. And for locals, passive recreation, we contemplated bocce ball courts, and perhaps, you know, bocce ball leagues and tournaments can occur in, inside. If you flip back to the previous slide, you can see how the bocce ball courts integrate nicely with a pool that we contemplate would be available for the public to use as well. Behind that, we're excited by the possibility to have an adventure-inspired boutique hotel that kind of brings all the good parts of camping in with all the comforts of being in a, a comfortable renovated Airstream trailer. So, we work with Airstream, who's based in Ohio, to build and renovate these beautiful custom trailers. And the Airstream's really a lasting, iconic, American design that we think really, really fits in well with the Ojai lifestyle. It's, it's some, this is a place that we contemplate will invite visitors to Ojai to, to have a base camp, if you will, to begin to explore the downtown scene, and they'll do that on bikes that we'll provide for them. They'll also be treated other amenities like hiking guides in partnership with the U.S. Forest Department next door and the ranger station there, to kind of co-program and, and get people connected with the natural beauty of Ojai. Other amenities will include a greenhouse and vegetable garden that will, again, connect visitors and locals with the agrarian and farming culture in Ojai. And as this is kind of the end of the, of the road in downtown, it's really the gateway to the more agrarian and farming uses further, further eastward. So, we wanted to kind of bow to that with the, the greenhouse and kind of engage people in that, in that greenery. So, some of the benefits of the, of the concept that we're looking at here include, I think, one of the, address one of the comments that we heard again and again, was that traffic is really important. It's becoming a nuisance here in, in Ojai when Ojai Avenue is congested on, on a weekend. And we look back at the, at the, all the uses that had been historically happening on the site, from the, the bowling alley to the, there was a bar and restaurant and even a dance permit at, at one time. And the amount of traffic that that use generated was significant. I mean, you can tell by how big the parking lot is, taking up seventy percent of the site, that there were a lot of cars coming in and out of there. And the use that we're contemplating actually significantly reduces the number of historical trips that are generated in the use, which seem to be, again, a common thread among people we talk to. The, I'll just have about one more minute of, of comments, and then I'll take your, your questions, so thanks for bearing with me. I mentioned adaptive reuse of the existing structure, and people, again, time and time said, "Why you got to take that building down? It's a, it's a great building, it's great, great bones." And so, we examined it, and although there's parts that have great bones, there's also parts that might be problematic and, and cost a lot of money to renovate and get up to snuff. So, we, we contemplated a scheme where we reuse some of the existing exterior walls of the, of the building that's there now, and that accomplishes a couple things. It creates both a, a sound barrier to protect the neighborhoods, and also a visual barrier to protect the surrounding uses from having their eyes exactly on what's happening inside, and just creates privacy for everybody involved. And then also, the inside of those walls can be used for some great public murals that could be, I think, an iconic part of the project as well. The asphalt, asphalt covers a large majority of the, of the site right now, almost seventy percent. We want to remove all of it. We want to take the landscape back to its, as close as we can to its, its native state, where we plant local, native drought-tolerant plants, and reduce that impermeable surface with a permeable surface that will allow water to get back into the ground, the groundwater basins and recharge things. Of course, the site will be night-sky compliant. Part of the, the magic of staying in an, in an Airstream is being able to, to look up in the, at the sky and enjoy the bright night, the bright night stars. And we think that that'll also be a benefit to the local community as well. And in this project, this property has been blighted for, for many years in its current state, and there've been many different proposals over, over time, and I'm sure many of them had, had merit. We're really looking for your, your feedback, so that what we ultimately propose here can be the best project for Ojai. It can be the best project for Ojai residents in the community here, and it can be the best project for people who visit Ojai and want that first experience to be, you know, just as magical as, as it is for you living here. And so, we think that with the variety of uses that we have, which both appeal to locals with passive recreational opportunities, and then the very light impact that the, the motel, hotel has, it's just a really nice symphony of, of uses for this site, and is much lower impact from a traffic perspective and from a, a use perspective as the prior, the prior site had. So, I'm here for your questions and would love to, to field any, any clarifications or, or questions that you have about our, our proposal, but more than anything, we want to hear your, your comments, so that we can take that back and rejigger the design so that it's, it's as, as good as it can be.
Questions? Kathleen?
Start with a couple things. Some of the things. Yeah, we can hear that in the background.
I only speak to music. That's just.
That's part of the vibe. So, first of all, I wanted to say that, you know, thank you for coming forward, and some things that you presented that I really appreciate. It was, you know, the community engagement, the sustainability factor, you know, the methods and materials you're looking at, the connection to the street, things about traffic and, you know, making it more walkable and bikeable. But I also have some concerns about the compatibility, mostly of the Airstream units, being compatible with the architecture you're proposing on the street side, and also with just the general downtown area. I'm also concerned about if it's kind of a camping experience, which it sounds like it is, at least if, if the Airstreams were there, just the actual size of the spaces for each unit. And then, I'm also curious to know if it was kind of a camping environment, what would be some of the activities that potentially could happen there? Like, would each unit have their own fire pit or barbecue, outdoor barbecue, or that type of thing, and how that might affect the residential area behind it? And then, also, you talked about, say, the pool in the bocce court area could be open to the public, and how do you see that? In other words, the Airstream, people using the Airstreams would be, of course, there as guests and would use the pool in bocce, but would the members of the public pay to get in, or how would that look?
Thanks, Chair Foster, Commissioner Nolan. A lot of, lot of good, good questions. I'll do my best to address all, all of them, and you might need to remind me of, of a few of them. And, and because it is a fairly conceptual design at this point, there's certainly a lot more that we'll need to sort out as we get, as we get further, and it'll, it'll happen, you know, a full proposal to you, so things, things might change. I think your, your first question was about the size of the, of the RV. I think your first question was about the size of the RV spaces relative to the site. And so, this might be a longer conversation. But we aim to, we'd aim to approve the project as an RV park under the Urban Housing HUD Design Guidelines, which HUD is kind of the overarching building authority, building department authority when it comes to RV parks. Because these aren't buildings, they're licensed by the DMV. And all RV parks in the state of California get licensed and the building permits get issued by Urban Housing HUD. And so, the HUD prescribes minimum sizes for RV spaces. And the sizes that we're proposing here, architect-designed-in-conformance, they're actually a bit larger than the minimum design for RV units. So we contemplate that each unit will have kind of an outdoor table and lounge area. So the person or, you know, couple staying in the airstream might have a picnic table. They might have an electric barbecue outside that would plug into the trailer. So it wouldn't be cooking with gas or charcoal, but they would have an option to cook outside. And then, we're not contemplating individual fire pits at the units. We're contemplating one communal fire pit that people could congregate around. Families might be able to roast marshmallows or smores and have a kind of intimate family experience around that. Remind me of your, a few of your other questions so I can adequately address them.
Well, the other one was like the compatibility of the airstream units with not only...
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. The other question was the compatibility of the airstream units with not only your proposed architecture, but just the general architecture and guidelines for the east end of Ojai.
Great, great question. So, our team and our architects spent a lot of time reviewing the guidelines. And the guidelines prescribe an active street front with Spanish, Western architecture. And we have examples of both Spanish and Western architecture proposed on the street frontage. And the way, I think, really, really skillfully, our architect designed the site really screens the airstreams from the public view. So if you're coming down Ojai Avenue, you don't even really see them. Maybe a peak between the buildings. But the idea is really to create an experience, and you can see in the rendering here, that the idea is really to create an experience that's exciting on the street. And then as you walk in, there's kind of a moment of discovery where when you walk past the main buildings, you know, you see this kind of urban camping experience that kind of gets a little bit progressively more, I don't know, natural as you go into the site. It starts out very urban. And as you dip into the site, it becomes more and more of a natural experience. And I mentioned in the back of the site, to the north, where we do have residential neighbors, we'll use the existing 12-foot-high walls of the bowling alley to provide a natural, to provide a physical screen so that the neighbors can't see or hear, you know, attenuating the sound of what's happening inside. And then, on the east side of the site, we have an existing fence that we'd enhance with landscaping to create a buffer so that you wouldn't be able to see these units unless you're in an airplane or helicopter from above.
One quick question. So, what was your intention with using, say, the airstreams rather than, say, a built structure or something else?
I guess the best way I can say it is we have a love affair with the airstream. We think it's a beautiful, iconic design. We think that, you know, it packs a lot into 150 square feet. Most of the units are actually closer to 100 square feet. And just a really exciting experience to stay in one. And so, we think it represents kind of the spirit of camping in a really comfortable way. And we think they're a beautiful mid-century design.
That last question that I had asked was, how would the general public interact with the, say, like, the pool in the bocce court area, knowing that people that were actually staying in the airstreams would be using that also? How would that interface? Would they pay to go in, or would it be certain hours that they could use it, the general public?
Our initial thoughts on that, and again, this would need to be worked out and I'd love to get your input on this, but would be that up until a certain point, as you walk into the site, things would be open to the public. So the public would be able to walk in, grab a coffee, sit by the fire pit, use the bocce ball courts, you know, use the pool during certain hours. And there might be some, again, this is something that we'll have to sort out a little bit as we... But that's kind of the general. And then there'll be a point at which it's kind of a guest-only area where you keep walking back to get to the airstreams. And whether there's a fence or a gate or landscaping buffer there, there needs to be some privacy for the people who are staying overnight.
You said you were in the process of buying units. In what state was it? Ohio?
We have a partnership with the manufacturer of the airstreams in Ohio, Columbus, Ohio.
And did you, have you done this before then?
We were new to this, to this concept. We have, we've done some experimenting with this and everybody seems to really fall in love with the airstream.
When you say you're renovating the airstreams, are you maintaining the character, you know, the paneled look, the rounded panel look on the inside? And are you using sustainable materials?
Absolutely.
Or at least, you know, non-toxic materials?
Absolutely.
I'd love to know more about that as well. Because a lot of these mobile homes or RVs are very toxic. I mean, I get sick going through these shows with these new RVs and you go through two or three of them and I'm already feeling it. So I was just wondering how, what kind of materials are that you were planning and using?
So, you know, airstreams started producing these trailers in the early 1930s. About 70% of all the airstreams they ever produced are still on the road. They're a really robust design. And so as a result, it's easy for us to find used shells. Sometimes they're sitting in the desert and various states of disrepair. And so, we'll find those shells, we'll renovate them, make them waterproof on the outside, and then work with airstream. Airstream is 100% made in the United States. They use formaldehyde-free cabinetry. They use non-VOC sealants and paints and everything that they do. And working with the manufacturer, you know, there's a large assembly line facility. So there's very little waste in the assembly line. These things are made to last forever. And, you know, I think, at this point, we're contemplating a mix of some new and some vintage trailers to the extent that we can source those for all 30 units that we're contemplating.
Hi. So I have three questions and I'll just suggest them and then let you respond. So, the first question's broad. I inferred from what you were saying that you aren't particularly, and maybe please correct me if I'm wrong, that you're not particularly stuck on this design. Usually when people come and present a concept review, they have quite a bit of attachment to it turning out the way it looks. And that we're just here to sort of figure out if it's a green light or a red light and maybe refine it. But I inferred from what you were saying that maybe you're open to a much broader interpretation or doing something altogether different with this space? So that's one question. More specifically, what do you propose in terms of management? You know, how would this be overseen? Would there be somebody there 24/7? I can imagine that the neighbors are going to be concerned that it's going to be all-night camping party in the neighborhood. So how would you speak to that? And then, you know, do you worry that airstreams are kind of, you know, the thing of the moment? That, you know, that it's a fad? And, you know, I think a lot of people are concerned that, you know, people will want to glamp in an airstream for a while. I would. But then they won't. And then, to make the property pay for itself, there'll be a request that we allow the substitution of regular RVs. So I think those are three things I'd like you to speak to.
Remind me of the first one. I got the last, I got the last two.
The, how broad of a net are you casting in terms of? I mean, how much, how much feedback can we give you? How much feedback can the community give you?
So, you know, we've taken all the feedback we've gotten to date. And this is the proposal that we think reflects the most comments that we got. Our company has a very broad repertoire of projects. I mentioned from mid- or high-rise multifamily to single-family homes and hospitality. So we're working on a 64-unit luxury wine country resort on a historic property. We're working on, you know, 500-bed student housing project. So we're certainly not attached to any one proposal. But this is one that kind of, as I mentioned, our sieve that we have for taking on projects. And this one for us seems to be the most economically viable to build a small-scale use on the site. And we did look at affordable housing on the site. But the density, without asking for some really serious bonus density requests, which I think would be rather controversial, it'd be tough to make, to make a return that was market-acceptable for our investors. But we think that would be a great use of the site with significant subsidy, perhaps from the city or grant money. So I think that perhaps that could be something that another developer might be able to do if they were able to get their hands on some additional subsidy. So we're open to other proposals. But this is one concept that we think works well. And I'm sure there's others who like that feedback. Do I think airstreams are a thing of the moment? As I mentioned, I think that they're an enduring American icon brand. People love the airstream and they always have. They hearken back to kind of the simple days of camping, the American road trip. And there's something, I think, really magical about staying in one. I think that the experience of being, of camping and being outdoors and having a really nice, comfortable place to stay is something that's going to be appealing for a long time. Camping is some, is kind of as American as apple pie. And so I don't think that the airstream's ever going to be out of date. I think it's as timeless as mid-century architecture that, you know, doesn't really ever go out of style. The management. We contemplate full-time onsite management. It's available 24 hours a day.
So, you have done these projects in other cities, correct?
In Santa Barbara, we own an RV park on two acres. And when we purchased the property, 30 of the units were full-time, long-term residents. Veterans, blue-collar workers. There were five units that were vacant when we purchased the property. And we renovated some airstreams and put them on. And we thought we might be able to rent those to young professionals to kind of intermix and create a really nice mix of housing opportunities. Really quickly, it became apparent that there is a high demand for people who wanted to stay in them. And so, we've operated a five-unit boutique airstream hotel in Santa Barbara called Autocamp. And it's just, it's been really, really successful. We appeared in Sunset Magazine a year and a half ago. And we've been at close to 100% occupancy on those five units since then, weekends and summers and winter included. So we see a really high demand for people wanting to stay and have that comfortable camping experience.
What are the rates of those units?
They started at the low 100s and go up to about $200 during a peak night in the summertime. And they accommodate up to four people. So it seems to be a really, a really affordable mid-range option in Santa Barbara where the average daily rate in Santa Barbara is, for hotels, is close to $300. And our average daily rate comes out to about $120.
I'm curious more about how you zeroed in on Ojai. Like, how did you, how did you come about it? And how'd you decide that you wanted to put RVs at the bowling alley in Ojai, California?
Well, I've been coming to Ojai since I was a little boy. And I've always loved Ojai. I came here to camp as a little boy. And I just live over the hill, so I'm here all the time. I've got a lot of friends in town who run businesses and who operate hotels. And in discussing, in discussing this site with all the people we've spoken to, this seemed to be a use that was, that was interesting to people and exciting to people. And we're excited about it as well. So it just seemed to fit into the character of Ojai. It's a little quirky. It's a little weird. It's a little artistic. Embraces the natural setting. And I think it does something really interesting to Ojai Avenue there when you kind of deconstruct this old use and make it into something that's really unexpected. And it's especially unexpected until you walk in. I mean, you don't really see it. And that's kind of our idea. We want it to kind of be a secret. So on the exterior, you've got these uses that you'd expect everywhere else in Ojai. And then when you come in, you know, it kind of plays with your emotion. It's kind of exciting.
Thank you.
No further questions for the...
Thank you. Thank you.
So, this is a discussion item, really, a concept review is the opportunity for the public to come forward and, that's what we're here to do. We're here to listen. And so let's start with Claire Mallett. Claire's card right here.
Hello, my name's Claire Mallett. I'm here representing Steve Edelson, who owns the properties each side of the proposed lot. He owns the Hummingbird Hotel, the property that's on the, the Hummingbird Hotel is on, and the Capri Hotel. And he is fully supportive of this project and would love to see it go ahead.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Muriel Lavender. I lived in Ojai for 40 years. And I remember when the bowling alley was still in business and the restaurant that was attached to it served a great breakfast. And it was a treat when we could take the kids down and get their breakfast. I must say that I enjoy seeing the interest in the airstream trailers. But as an owner of property in the Golden West tract, where my mother lived for more than 20 years, and I know that she would have just been horrified at the thought of describing to friends coming to visit her for the first time in Ojai, just turn at the trailer park there across from the golf course. And so, my first reaction to this proposal is that I really don't think it's appropriate for Ojai. I was with Ojai Realty Company as an agent and associate broker for 17 years. And one of the most, Lorie B. Ornstedt owned Ojai Realty at that time and she was a terrific trainer. And she closed, she closed the real estate business a number of years ago so she could play bridge more frequently. But it's now another business. But being in real estate with someone like Lorie, who had been in Ojai for so many years and who knew the property so well, really trained those of us who worked for her about how we need to watch out for the properties that people buy when they come to Ojai. And they're looking for a certain ambiance when they come to Ojai. And they want something that is, is in a location that is desirable. And the Golden West tract is a very desirable area for people to buy. It's not at the high end, but they're very nice houses. And I kept mother's house and keep it rented to a lovely couple. I don't want a mobile home park or an airstream RV concept to be passed by the planning commission because I think there must be other... because I think there must be other options for that property in Ojai. There's constant talk about the need for low-cost housing. And as an example, those duplexes in Golden West were built about 1960, I think, or 1964. And they were to be low-cost housing for seniors. And the CCNRs were used up several years ago. But at the time those units were built, no one over 15 was to live there. And they sold very quickly. And now, they're very much in demand. And they're considerably more than they cost. I think they cost somewhere around $6,000 or $7,000 when they first came on the market. And they're considerably more than that now. But then, as the neighborhood expanded and, and built the two and three and sometimes four-bedroom units, it became a very desirable family area. The students go to Topa Topa School or to San Antonio School or to junior high or high school or perhaps to some of the private schools here in Ojai. But it's a happy, safe environment. And I think that if that land were put to use by some low-cost housing, similar, for instance, to those properties on the north, let's see, it would be the northeast side of Montgomery Street, just before you get to Grand. Oh, there's, there's a Gray Gables unit in there too and also some apartments. But before that, there's, there's some two-story units that, that were built as low-cost housing. And I think that, that requirement for low-cost housing expired. But they're very nice units. And if we could put something like that in there, I think it would serve the need for those people who need low-cost housing, but also would be a real part of the community instead of the itinerant sort of visitors now and, and that sort of thing.
Okay, I'm going to have to interrupt you because.
I've used my time.
You have.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Josh, Josh Tote?
My name is Josh Tate. I'm an owner of a company called Trailer Made. And I think this concept is, you know, great. I think it, you know, braces the community here in Ojai. And I think, you know, just the, the real factor and the genuine factor of creating a, a place that is safe for people to come, not only for the community, but the tourists, I think, you know, something special. So, I think it should be, you know, considered.
Thank you, Josh. Brad Stewart?
Hi, thank you, Commission members. My name is Brad Stewart. I live here in Ojai, have a daughter up at Bessein Hill on the top of the hill, and a daughter in grade school at Oak Grove Elementary, two generations. Want to also mention, I moved here from Ojai, had 30 years in a company called Amair Sports, which was the number-one company in the world making outdoor products for people that go to this kind of thing. It's a $3 billion company, the larger, one of the larger brands they own is Wilson Sporting Goods, many, many other brands, based in Helsinki, Finland and Europe. And I feel I have a pretty good handle on the consumer that these guys are, are talking about. Neil has been gracious enough to email me, and I appreciate his professionalism. We're in town because we're researching a similar concept. And, and we believe that they're, conceptually, what the guys are talking about with AutoCamp is great. We, we love the idea. And we've been working for quite some time with a group of people to develop something similar. The difference, I would say, and the point that I want to kind of enter into the record and to consider, is a little bit to some of the questions that you have. The current operation here would be six times the operation in Santa Barbara in terms of scale. I worked a lot in how do you scale sporting goods initiatives up. And six times is a big leap. I, I don't know if it's the right leap or the wrong leap. I'm just commenting that it's a big leap. It's six times the scale of that. The concept we've looked at and the way that we've considered executing in Ojai would be a small-town concept built from locals on some land and in partnership with an individual who's been a local here for a long time. There's a saying in the sports world that says it's important to be the first to be second. The people who innovate oftentimes don't succeed. It's actually the first brand or the entity that's second to a technology to do that. A great example is Reebok invented the pump way in advance of when Nike invented the concept of Nike Air. And Nike Air kind of won that battle because they were second. And that's kind of my question. Ojai will be the second city to do this in with any sort of scale. The Santa Barbara operation doesn't have a full-time desk clerk or, or anything like has been described here. And I agree with Neil that what he's trying to add here is probably what it, what it needs. But Ojai would be the test market for this on a pretty large scale with 30 trailers. The typical business model and how we benchmark these things in the year or so that we've been doing research on them is these businesses exist slightly out of town. Marfa, Texas, for example, is an operation that's very successfully with something called El Cosmico. Another example of this is up in Joshua Tree. So, typically, Airstream Hotels tend to be a little bit remote and quirky in-location as well as the consumer attracted to them. Rather than putting it in a Main Street location or an Ojai Road location in this instance, where you might have some collisions, as Neil's word was put. And then, the only other comment, as a kind of a newer resident to town, I just wanted to mention that one of the first things I noticed, I moved here from Portland, Oregon, which has a very progressive urban planning program, was the amount of abandoned properties in the core of downtown Ojai. And it seems to me that the priority would be placed on getting the middle figured out before you get to the ends of the town and getting that figured out. So, just a comment. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Bane Damon?
Well, I'll get right to the point. I was appalled when I learned that a trailer park was being considered to be built here. What we need are places for the use and enjoyment of our local people, not for the profit of the owners or the comfort of visitors. We have enough of that already. It's the people here that are missing out on things by the establishment of an unneeded trailer camp. Now that we have lost our bowling alley, we now have the threat of permanently losing a great site for our own needed enjoyment. We don't want to be stuck with an unwanted and unneeded establishment in Ojai. We should be focusing our efforts on encouraging proposals that will result in benefiting directly those people in Ojai. I was glad to hear at least that was considered in this. I'm kind of disappointed that their analysis of doing something that's going to be really good for Ojai didn't come out very good compared to doing something that's good for the outside visitors, a trailer park. In conclusion, let me simplify the issue by just plain asking. The people of the Ojai community, should we be supporting them? Or should we be supporting some outside organization who wants to build something that the Ojai neither needs nor wants? Or, and some spectator or speculator who now owns the bowling alley property? We've got to think of the future of Ojai people. We've lost out on the movie theater. We let the weather sphere be built and stayed there. Are we going to lose this battle too for giving the people of Ojai recreational facilities that they clearly need? We've lost our theater too for quite a while. And this is another one that we sure hate to lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damon. So, I'm out of cards, but I see a lot of you out there. And this is an open discussion. So, if you, anyone wants to come forward, just state your name and address and.
Hello, my name is Vivian Chenelli, and I don't use this word often, blessed, but I'm blessed to own the property right next door to the bowling alley. So, I have some specific questions based on what Neil, where'd you go? What Neil proposed.
So, you can address us and we'll figure out a way.
Okay, okay. I just, I'll, I'll read off my questions. Number one, my question was about parking. Do the visitor, would the visitors drive to the jet stream and park in front of the jet stream? Or would they be parking on the street? That was one of the questions. And I just wanted to know about availability of parking on Ojai Boulevard. Is there, would, do you all see enough space there? Or will they start coming, you know, probably parking on Golden West, which is where I live? So, obviously, I'm concerned. I was curious to see where the jet stream, I saw the picture, but from the side it was a little hard to see the outline of the property. And just wondered, are the jet streams close to my, to my property? Or it looked like they were around. They were.
So, where's your property located?
Right next door.
On the north, it would be on the north side of?
Yes, the, the, the first house you come to when you come down Golden West after the. Also, you asked a question about Ms. Sevilla. Is that how you pronounce it? Sevilla? About, is there going to be all-night camping parties? So, I don't know if they, that was answered, but I was curious about, again, where the jet streams would be. And Neil, you mentioned a wall, a 12-foot wall. I was just wondering where that was going to be as well. And I was curious about sewage. Do, is there, are there toilets in the jet stream? Or do they go to outhouses? And how does the sewage get taken care of for each jet stream? And I was also thinking about delivery, restaurant delivery, cafe delivery. Would that be delivered through the front, through the back, near my place or on the street, on the side? Just because I know some people who live next to restaurants and, and their issue is, seems to be a lot of delivery trucks coming at, at all different hours. So. I think I've covered my questions. Yep, that was it.
All right.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Hi, Steve, Commissioner's staff. So, real quick, I'm becoming more and more of an expert in this field. And the question I would have then is Neil expressed an interest to have this controlled by HCD. Is that correct? So.
HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development. It's a federal agency. HCD is Housing and Community Development, a state agency, which.
So, an RV park is described by the state as a special occupancy park?
I have not researched the exact components of the applicant's proposal. Given that this is a concept review, they have not submitted to me an exact proposal for what they, how they plan to permit this. Thus, I do not have an answer to that question as we have not had those conversations with the applicant pending the discussion tonight.
The state regulates mobile home parks and special occupancy parks, which are regulated by the state. What that means is wherever the setback is for the city, let's say it's 10 feet, the state is responsible for the rest of the property, not the city. So, that means the city is in charge of the 10-foot setback, and that's it. So, here's, here's my concern is that you have, there's four projects I can think of that are close. There's one on Burnham Road, which has RVs and mobile homes. There's, there's two in Casita Springs. And there's one, the AutoCamp, that I know of, that Neil has up in Santa Barbara. And I know they have to make money. They have to have a return for their investors. And my concern is if it's not making money, if you have 30 Airstreams on Ojai Avenue and all of a sudden it's not making money, it's not a stretch to carve out 15 of them and turn them into mobile homes. You would have to get that approved possibly from you, but you may not be here. We all know how that goes. People change. So, that's my concern, is that the operation that they're running now in Santa Barbara is just that. It's five Airstream trailers in the front and about 30 trailers and mobile homes in the back. So, you owe it to yourselves, if this is the applicant, if Neil is applying for this, you owe it to yourselves to drive to Santa Barbara and drive through and look and see if that's what you want on Ojai Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else like to come forward?
You're more than welcome to go.
Jeff Wells from Ojai. I'm a little bit confused. Is this going to be under a CUP process?
I believe that's, that's how it would go.
It would depend on what type of permit they, they sought. If they sought approval as a hotel or a motel, that require, that's permitted use in the C1 zone, does not require a conditional use permit. It does, however, require a design or view permit from the planning commission. If instead, they went through this state RV park process, then that would require some sort of permit to be determined upon review of that exact application.
And my whole thing is, you know, having a property or having a property three doors down, which I'd never heard from Neil, and I'm a hotelier as well. And I don't have a problem with the 30 units. I think that's fine for the size of the lot. What I do have a problem with is the mobile, the Airstreams with respect to just not being a permanent structure. I see more of a, you know, if they want to build a boutique, you know, type of permanent mortar, brick-and-mortar type of complex, and I'm all for that. I think that'd be great, actually. I think we need to have small, little boutique properties, you know. If any, we don't need 100-unit complex here. We need small, little complexes because that's what Ojai is all about. At the same time, we've just basically, you know, absorbed 300 vacation rentals in the valley. And what everybody hears is a lot of vacation rental operators saying, hey, the hotels are full and don't worry, the hotels don't need the extra business and what have you, and we're the overflow. That's not the case. I'm here to tell you, as a hotelier, that's not the case. Weekends are definitely great. Midweek business is still midweek business. So, and again, I'm, I'm all for property rights and doing, you know, if you own a piece of property, you should be able to do whatever you want on it. But at the same time, I would definitely put caution, you know, on this project with regards to transient occupant, occupancy type of use and possibly table it until you resolve our vacation rental problem that we have. That's basically plaguing the city. And, you know, just take that in, you know, advisement, consideration, you know, with respect to, you know, just being in the business. Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Hi, my name's Ryan Miller. I just wanted to quickly respond to Mr. Hilger's remark about the AutoCamp Santa Barbara project. I was involved with that one. And, you know, that's a 35-unit special occupancy park. And, you know, we take our core values very seriously in our business. And, you know, most of those people that live there are full-time residents. They were when we picked up the property. There were a couple vacancies. We decided to use those vacancies to create, you know, the Airstream project that you guys are probably familiar with. But I just want to be clear that, you know, there's a reason why that property is not all Airstreams because we chose to respect the community there. And I think it's, that kind of just reflects the, the way that we operate. Thank you.
Thanks. Did you want to?
Hi, my name is Vina. I have lived here in Ojai for about five or six years. And before that, I lived in Ventura. And I was working in a firm in Ventura doing architectural projects. And there was a project here in Ojai that we had done that was difficult to put through because now I realize as an Ojai resident versus someone living outside of Ojai, there are really specific, special things in Ojai that I really valued that I think most people wouldn't know unless you lived here. One thing I definitely know in my heart is we need housing in Ojai. We need affordable housing that's good quality, that's accessible for most people. And I really like this project. I love the idea of the Airstream. I love the look of it. I've seen the AutoCamp in pictures. I think it's fabulous. But I think that we need to consider the people in Ojai and what we need. And the fact that we're looking at transient housing that we already have a lot of. And the fact that we're looking at transient housing, that we already have a lot of because of Airbnbs, I think we need to move away from that and really consider who lives here and, and what is needed. So, if we were to maybe think of a way to make this proposal, maybe a live-work situation where people could live and, and maybe work at the amenities that they're proposing, or maybe we could take advantage of the overlay, the housing overlay for this project, and make it work financially for Maysalane Partners, as well as, you know, the project with the housing, I think that's a really good opportunity to take. So, those are my comments.
Hello, my name is Maria Macaluso. I am a teacher in Ojai. I teach elementary school. And I was also born and raised here, and I love Ojai. I maybe have a different view, because I was a child here, and I work with children. But I see the need, of course, for affordable housing, I agree with that. But another idea that comes to mind is something for the youth. I know we have our wonderful recreation department, and many beautiful parks, including Libby Park, which was just beautifully redone. But all of my students, when they're talking with their families, they're going to Ventura to have birthday parties, or, you know, weekend activities. They're almost always out of town when asked what they did for the weekend. I know, I know that our youth population here is somewhat small compared to other towns, so I don't know if we have the population to sustain something like that, but from my perspective, I think something like that would be wonderful. Particularly because I think that the parks lend themselves to younger children, and the skate park lends itself to maybe a little, slightly older children, if you skateboard or rollerblade. But I think that there's still a group that's not being reached, including students in high school, and maybe some more artistic outlets for children, and things of that sort. So, just my own perspective. Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Did anyone else like to comment?
Doug LeBarre, Ojai. I guess when the smoking ban went on commercial properties, it put the kibosh on the bowling alley. That's when it really went downhill. And it's been, it's been a really bad situation for a couple of decades. There's been many proposals that have been fielded and rejected. The city's placed a zoning overlay on the property, and I interpret that to mean that the city is open to alternative uses to it than just C1. And I think it would be an improvement that would relieve decades, decades of long vacancy. I think the most important issue to consider here is whether this project will enhance the culture of Ojai and what it stands for. I think it would.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? All right. So the public has spoken for tonight anyways. Let's, let's bring him back to the dais here and have a little conversation.
I would like to bring the applicant back up and have him clarify a few of the questions that were brought up.
Sure. Neil, would you like to come back up to the dais here, or the podium?
Thank you, Chair Foster. Commissioner.
Well, some of the questions that were brought up, as far as affordable housing concepts, have you explored adequately the idea of using the similar concept of an RB, not maybe an RV park, or a, more like a mobile home park? But I know these terms have very negative connotations to them, okay? And I realize that what you're doing is an up-leveled version of an RV park. So I think it's not appro, not, well, not appropriate, but it's not, your version of an RV park is upscale. Boutique-like, nostalgic. It's very high-end, I would say. So there's another concept of a mobile home park, again, with the same up-leveled sustainability concept, that might be, might address the affordable housing question here in Ojai. Have you explored that option at all?
Chair Foster, Commissioner. I think, you know, one of the things we found, again, being students of urban planning, is that, and there's no free lunch when it comes to any urban planning decision that you make. There's some reality about the costs of land, and there's some reality about what densities people find comfortable, and what neighborhoods find comfortable to them. And so it's one of those things where the trade-off that you end up making, and this is with every land use decision that involves housing, that involves commercial buildings, it's, you know, you, you can have all the affordable housing you want if you allow it to go up, if you allow people to build higher, denser buildings. But some people don't like the feel and scale of three- or four-story buildings. It's difficult to make a one-story or two-story affordable housing project work without significant subsidies, either in the form of financial subsidies, or development incentives, which again, has you going up or out. And it's just something that, you know, your commission's going to have to grapple with on the site. If we came back with a proposal for affordable housing, or another developer came forward with affordable housing proposal, they'd either need to go up or find money somewhere. And our projects all are privately financed. We, we don't take advantage of, of some of the grant programs available, it's just not our, it's not our expertise. But I will say that of the housing projects we've done, every one of them does incorporate some level of affordability. In California, we tend to use the state bonus density housing law to permit additional density. So I guess your question with respect to would a traditional RV park work on that site with, with annual renters, I'm of the opinion that it probably wouldn't work because of the cost of the land on Ojai Avenue. It might work in another part of Ojai where the land basis is a bit, a bit less expensive.
And another question about the bowling alley itself, have you considered keeping a portion of the bowling alley as a part, maintaining some of that nostalgia, you might say, opening up? Because there's a connection there between the bowling alley and, I think, the old-school, vintage look of the Airstream. I would think that would go well with it. Have you considered keeping a portion of the bowling alley intact?
That's a great comment, and we actually did, did consider that, and it continues to be an option on, on the table. One of the realities is that that building is, is aging. It's going to need a new roof and significant physical improvements to be safe for human habitability on a, on a go-forward basis. So one of our thoughts was reimagining that, that bowling alley, again, as like, as a bocce ball court, or, you know, passive bocce ball, where it might, you might have some of the walls, but you don't have the, the ceiling. Again, trying to use that building, but, but trying to be economical with the decisions about how to, how to renovate it when you've got other, other uses and costs that'll be necessary to make a project work. Thank you.
Any other questions for...
So, how do you respond to the concern that it's, can morph into something much less attractive than what you propose?
There's a few ways to respond to that. One is that if the commission likes the idea of this proposal, they could certainly restrict to future use and make it, you know, de, de-restrict the use from becoming the park that you don't want with, you know, transient trailers coming in, or with it becoming affordable housing. I kind of heard two things. Some people said, I want, we want to see more affordable housing, and other people said, we don't want to see an affordable, we don't want to see a trailer park. So, trailer parks are affordable housing when they're not boutique trailer parks like we're, like we're contemplating. So, some people say they want more of that, some people say they don't. So that's, again, something that needs to be reconciled. Another way to answer that question, and I alluded to it in my, my presentation, is that we've taken great care to prevent the public from being able to see into the core. I mean, it's a, I think, really skillful job by architects by creating a facade that looks like the rest of, of Ojai, so you don't really see what's inside the park unless you're going in there, unless you're intentionally going inside. But you can go to the retail, you can go to the cafe that we contemplate on the outside without seeing that, and we are trying to screen the park on all sides.
So how would you, so, so how would you screen it on the Golden West side?
So if you pull up the, the site plan, or have that in front of you, I mean, this is a big rectangle. So on the short side of the rectangle, we're on Ojai Avenue, and we've got our, our building facades, one-story Spanish and Western facades. On the east and west sides, we'll have walls with mature landscaping. On the west side, we've got the Forest Service and Ranger Station, so we'll have landscaping and a wall or a fence on, on that side. On the side that faces the, the east, again, we'll have a, a fence and mature landscaping. And then on the rear of the site, the north-facing side that faces the neighborhood, the Golden West track, there is a property line, 10-foot CMU block wall that is part of the existing bowling alley structure. We contemplate reinforcing that wall and using that wall as a visual and, and noise buffer to protect the neighborhood from the visual impacts of the, of the RV park.
I have a question. One of the questions that's brought up by someone in the audience was the parking. Obviously, you've got guest parking, and then you mentioned about having people coming in, visitors during the day, members of Ojai. How are you dealing with that parking, and is it going to be overflowed into Ojai Avenue? That was one of the questions.
Thank you. So, Chair Foster, Commissioner, it's our intention to provide 100% of the required parking that meets the demand of the project onsite, so that there's no required off-site parking for the demand. So, you know, there's some retail commercial uses which have, which have an equation to provide the parking demand. And then there's the hotel motel use, which also has an equation that, that's in the planning code that establishes what the required parkings are. So we're going to at least provide the required parking, and perhaps provide more if, if staff determines that our engineers were to determine that, that, that there would be a greater need than what, what's written into the code.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
All right. So is the parking that's reflected on the conceptual site plan reflective of what's in the code?
There, we're deficient by about 10 spaces in this, in this concept. So, in order to accommodate for those with what we ultimately would propose, we'd have to lose some programmatic elements, perhaps some of the, the Airstreams that are proposed to, or some of the other programmatic, programmatic elements to be able to provide all the required parking, but we're not contemplating asking for any parking concessions.
Okay. I had another question. So I realize in Santa Barbara, you have five Airstreams that you presently use as a motel, in other words, transient use. And I think you mentioned that it's booked, they're booked all the time? Is that true, the five units?
That's correct. They've been extremely, extremely popular in Santa Barbara.
Are you turning people away?
Yes.
Trying to get in? All right.
Every, every single weekend.
Did you do any sort of a feasibility study? I mean, Santa Barbara's a big, a larger city than we are here in Ojai, obviously. But do you feel like the 30 units would, or through a study, could you establish that the 30 units would rent out, or, well, rent, be booked on a regular basis?
Great, great question, Chair Foster, Commissioner Nolan. We have a number of colleagues that live and own hotels in, in this community, and we have their occupancy data. We also have occupancy data that's published in the, in the county and from the Visitors' Association, so have a really good understanding of what the seasonal occupancies are. We believe, and as evidenced by our competitors who kind of spoke about our project, they also believe there's significant demand for this concept in, in, in this community. And so I think whether we do it, or they do it, I think you're going to see it in this community soon, and I think you'll see a very strong demand from weekenders, you know, coming from LA area. I also think you'll see a lot of locals deciding to have a fun family night here, and getting to enjoy downtown in a different way. That's certainly something we see in Santa Barbara, both during the on and off-season, where families are deciding to kind of have a staycation for a really affordable, for about the price of a, of, you know, a really nice dinner. For 100, 120 bucks, you can have a really unique night in the downtown and walk, walk to a restaurant and, you know, have, have just a, a great downtown urban camping experience.
Thank you.
I have another question, it's just something that came from the audience again. One of the questions is the sewage, might be putting the cart before the horse right now, but that was a question asked.
No, I think that's a fantastic question. So, each of the Airstreams has a beautiful bathroom with a shower, and, and so we would install new underground infrastructure that would connect out to the, the sewer lateral on the, on Ojai Avenue. And, and we believe, based on our conversations with the utility providers, that, that there's sufficient capacity for the, for the units, in fact, or for the concept here. In fact, it results in a net decrease in, in sewage outflow and water uses compared with the, the prior use.
And then there was one last question, it was the delivery of goods.
The delivery of goods. So, I believe we only, we have less than 2,500 square feet of, of new retail commercial proposed here. Part of that would be some kind of check-in location. So, we're really talking about a small café use, and potentially an arts and crafts store or something like that, you know, on a very conceptual level. And I, I think that that could be accommodated during the, you know, afternoon hours, when there's less demand, or potentially early evening hours. But we're not talking about, you know, a supermarket, or, you know, a really high traffic. I don't think this is going to be, anything here would be serviced by, you know, big rigs or anything like that. We'd be talking about small, small vans or Sprinter vans.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Well, we're still discussing. Do you want to lead the charge?
I think this project completely misses the mark of Ojai. I look, why I feel that way, I look to the general plan, specifically the land use element. There's a lot of things I highlighted in here that I was going to go through and, and bring up, but many of the community members in the discussion here has already touched upon it. And just so you know, I'll just give a quick preface of, the land use element of the general plan sets forth Ojai's vision of its future, the means by which the city will protect its small-town character. I don't think this project does this. The land use element goes on and on, and at one point, it talks about the Ojai community attributes. What are the things that we find important in this town? One is to provide a refuge from the chaotic sprawl of the metropolitan Los Angeles area. That's not just a, to me, that's not just a physical manifestation. It's also, it's also a cultural manifestation and ideological one. Another one of Ojai's community attributes is that it is not dominated by automobiles. It specifically says that in the general plan. I can't think of something that celebrates the automobile more than an Airstream. And then finally, the last point I want to make about the Ojai community attributes is... is that it successfully blends the best of small-town lifestyles in a tourist economy. Two months, three months, I'm not sure how many months ago, Councilmember Bill Wirick got up here and said that the challenge for Ojai is that we're, of this generation is that we're a victim of our own success. We are overrun by tourists at this point, to the detriment of the residents of this valley. We're having conversations here, almost at every meeting, about second unit compliance, affordable housing. Some of the big concerns brought up by, within the Planning Commission is the added density those things are going to bring to Ojai. This is just going to bring more density to Ojai. The airstream is nowhere in the Ojai vernacular, anywhere. I mean, it's just, it's dropped in from outer space into our, into Ojai Avenue. It's just, I just don't think it's a, a well-thought-out plan. Finally, as has been brought up here before, I would not support any hotel use of this land whatsoever. I think that city has bigger problems right now. I would hope that City Council would consider putting a moratorium on any transient rentals whatsoever until we figure out our affordable housing, until we figure out our second unit. So, those are some of the comments I have. Thank you.
I'm going to ping-pong back to Commissioner Merk.
Really?
Yeah. We're going to mix it up a little bit, John.
On the hot seat. I love it. Really appreciate Commissioner Lajowski's comments. This is a really sensitive site, as everybody can see from all the people that are here. I think we've all had a lot of dreams about what we can do with this site. It's very visible, it's, it's very accessible, and it's just sat empty for 20 years at least. So, I, I appreciate the work that went into this concept, but as you can see, I, I don't know that it's the correct concept yet. It's not necessarily what we want. I really liked Maria Lavender's comment about being aware of people who are new to Ojai. I think people come in here and they see it and they go, "Oh, this is what Ojai is." And unless you've been here for a while, you don't really know what it's like. So, this to me looks like the sort of thing, if you drove through town, you would go, "Oh, this is what Ojai needs." But if you really live here for a while, I think you'd come up with a different concept. I do like the street frontage. I think what I saw, that design looks really nice. But I have a real concern about, it's just such a trendy kind of idea, these airstream trailers, and I'm really worried, looking another 20 years down the road, you know, what's going to become of these trailers? I mean, there's going to be a huge amount of maintenance or something to keep them in whatever condition they're in when they first go in, and I just don't know how realistic that is. And I would be very uncomfortable with approving something with a concept like this without a whole lot of restrictions on it, a lot of guarantees about how we could go forward. And I don't know that it's really addressing the real problem.
Thank you.
I think we have a case here of a really great idea in the wrong place, unfortunately. I'm a big proponent, proponent of affordable housing. It's a serious need that we have in our community. I think that there are some concepts that can be re-looked at on this piece of property that might not fit the, the typical affordable housing model that may, that you may want to consider. I don't have all those options to tell you about right now, but I think there are other I think there's two, that, that site is still, it, it's perfect for a community. I, I really resonate with one of this gentleman who talked about the needs of our community of Ojai. Somehow, just putting in another hotel doesn't service the community members of Ojai. Having a bowling alley there, I believe if that was reinvigorated, might even work out as something that would be a community gathering place once again. Talk about reinvigorating nostalgia, well, bowling alleys could do that as well. But I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm suggesting that there's two things, two uses of that property that I see would benefit Ojai. Affordable housing and some kind of community event-type facility, which I don't know what it is. So, that's my opinion.
I wish I could take some time to actually think about this a little bit more before I speak, but, so I'm just going to have to speak off the cuff based on ruminating about this for the last few days and listening to people in the community before I came down and listening to what everybody said today. Though I agree with my fellow commissioners, and I'm, I'm concerned with the same things they are, I think we also need to look at the fact that this property has sat contributing nothing for 20 years. And, you know, we, we say, we say no, but we, we really, it behooves us to really try to help people understand what they can do then. It's really easy to just keep kicking the can down the road, but when you have a buyer who's willing to work with the property and get this far, it's just so huge. And then, you know, we don't, we don't give any real guidance because we don't know, really. We don't know yet what to say, but we need to have a process that clarifies it, because it's just crazy. It's just going to sit there for another 20 years. And, you know, when I talked to people about it out in the community, they kept saying, "Well, yeah, everybody sort of voiced these same concerns about what it could turn into." And I, I just think that we've certainly been overturned a number of times, and it is very easy to go to the City Council and, and even if we live forever and we say no, it's got to be air streams, we've certainly been appealed in the past. So, there isn't any guarantee that it could stay that way. So, you know, I, I think we have to come up with more concrete suggestions, and I don't know if that means we, I don't know if it's possible, Ms. Wald, to create an ad hoc committee. Is, is there a way to do that to sort of help people clarify, you know, with, without them having to recuse ourselves because we're too involved? I mean, how, how can we, is there a way to instigate or initiate some kind of a process that would sort of actually make some concrete suggestions about what could be done?
I think the vehicle to do that is open session before the whole commission. I'm concerned that creating an ad hoc committee to help in-depth an applicant design their project could result in those commissioners on the ad hoc committee being forced to recuse from the final project consideration. Unfortunately, that's the constraints under which we operate. But this, this setting tonight provides that opportunity, and certainly this discussion could be continued with some additional time, some additional thought. I would expect Neil and his team will be taking all of this to heart as well.
I was at City Council last night, and I heard the property manager, Mr. Labar, speak, and, you know, he, he said that the owner of the property just said she, you know, was basically throwing her hands up about getting anything done in this town. And so, you know, I don't, at the end of the day, I think we need to feel really excited and positive about what does go in there and just saying, "Well, it's better than nothing." I mean, it is really better than nothing. It will contribute more to the community. We will get TOT, but I don't think that's the will of the people now. I do think that definitely designing something for the residents to support the community, I think we've reached a tipping point with the tour, with, with the issue of catering to transient communities. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Well, I'm actually in agreement with my fellow commissioners, but I'm also, I think what I heard earlier was that you were open to working on this concept. In other words, the concept wasn't set in stone. And to me, that's, that could be something really exciting. I agree that, you know, that property's been sitting there for 20 years. I'm not aware of the, of this apparently other projects that have come forward that were shot down. I don't know anything about that. But I think the fact that there, there, somebody is interested in buying that property and doing something is of value. And I would encourage you to come back, because I think a lot of things that you presented, I personally, and I think it does align with our, our values here. You talked about the public engagement, you talk, you know, the development on the street and what that would be and how engaging that would be. So, there was, and the sustainability factors, I think we align with that. And then personally, I'm just, I'm not so sure that the airstream actually fits in. I can see that being maybe somewhere else, but we're a really small community and we have a very small downtown and a main street. So, I think we, we need to be really sensitive as to what happens there. But I would encourage you to, to come back, and hopefully you've listened to what everyone said, you know, some of the things that, that would be of value. I'm not opposed to having a commercial component. I'm also, something with the housing, something that would be for the public. But I know that we're also doing our neighborhood planning, and, and in the Planning Commission in the past, we've talked about, I mean, it's not on the books now, but we've discussed, you know, could we change some of our zoning, like our commercial zoning, could then be, you know, village mixed-use, or could there be a combination of residential and commercial and something else, even though maybe it was an affordable housing? Once again, that's, you know, something to be discussed. So, I would definitely encourage you to listen to what everyone said tonight and, and come back. And then maybe the discussion does get continued here. So, I'm, I'm for looking, or I'm looking forward to hopefully a revision of this.
So, I really, just for the same points that we've all echoed here, sustainability, community is huge. And I forget what the third part was, something about locality. I really love this project. I mean, I see so much potential in it, but I just feel it's in the wrong location. That's what I'm struggling with. I just, I really think it's a great project. I'd really like to see it happen, but I don't think Ojai Avenue and that location is it. And, but at the same time, along with Commissioner Nolan, I want to encourage the applicant to explore other ideas, because you're coming in with the right, I think you're learning about who we are as, who we are here in, in Ojai through this, through this conversation we're having. And we are in tune with sustainability and community, a strong sense of who we are and as, as was echoed in our, by Commissioner Lajowski and our general land use plan, the sense of village and smallness, and we have to respect the residents. And so, there is a tendency, I think, to overlook that in development. So, I'm not going to ramble on anymore. I think I'll turn it over to Commissioner Nick Glenn.
So, you know, again, I think it's a great project, but the wrong place. And what Commissioner Foster said about being aware of the residents, the residents' feelings, I think it's a very important thing. I'm not going to go, my feelings have been said by my fellow commissioners, but I just look forward to Neil to coming back and something, you know, something coming out of this.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner?
I'd just like to add, I'd like to kind of take issue with this idea that the commission has discouraged any kind of development on this site in the past. We had a proposal maybe five years ago for a burger joint with, there was like, community facilities and all kinds of, we were so excited about that, we were ready to go out and build it, you know. I don't know, it just disappeared. We saw a concept review and then disappeared. So, we have had proposals in the past, we've usually been very positive about them, and this is another one that I think we're, I mean, you're hearing a lot of negative comments here, but I think overall, we're kind of excited about the idea of doing something with that property.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because we really want to see something happening there. But in my estimation, that, that property is, on many levels, different levels, is really valuable. You know, the fact that the history of it allows it to have traffic, you know, parking, you know, it was a, back in 1988, I believe, is where we draw the line on what was going on historically there. It was a bowling alley. So, a lot of different things could be used and done with that property. But you, I think we voiced pretty much, you know, we talked about recreation, we talked about housing, what that looks like. I think at this point, we'll, we'll just leave it at that. Okay? So, thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming forward and look forward to you to come forward in the future. Well, that's everybody. Okay. You know, when you hear, when you think about something, that's the one thing I've learned about being a planning commissioner. Yeah, it, it does, and it, and I do love it. That's what I said. I love it, but it's in the wrong place. I love this beautiful tree that I had to cut down the other day. It was a beautiful ficus tree, but it was planted five feet from the house. Beautiful tree in the wrong place, you know? It's just, sometimes you just, yeah. Well, I, I think there's other options for it. I really do. And I.
But continuing, we're going to move to our Director's Report and Director's Action. Ms. Wald.
Excuse me. So, we get, once again, excuse me, have a full list of, of just minor projects that we've approved, mostly hazardous trees or tree permits, and then a couple of temporary uses as we get into the holidays, and a home occupation permit. If anybody has any questions about any of those, I can, I can answer any questions. And then the next report is on the active code enforcement, and again, we know that the city is working to clear up old cases and move thoroughly or quickly through pending cases. Right now, our code enforcement officer is doing an, an assessment of vacant buildings in the community and has spent a number of hours on that. So, the list is a little bit different as, as his activities differ depending on how council direction and what he's encouraged to do. So, that's what he's doing right now. And then the next one is on our Planning Commission upcending meetings. We have one, one modification to this will be, possibly, we should have a discussion of whether or not we want to put the second unit discussion on December 2nd. We're going to have the hospital, which is going to be pretty comprehensive, Cal Solar, and an extension for the skate park lighting. That was just a recent acknowledgement that they're not going to be able to perform on that before it expires, which we approved last year. So, that's kind of urgent, we get that on for December 2nd. So, that might be kind of a lengthy meeting, so you just need to know if you still want second units on that.
I do think that's going to be a pretty big discussion, especially with the vacation rental update that just occurred, so.
So, table up for now?
No, I would, I would just reschedule to a more appropriate time. If we're too stacked on December 2nd.
We'll just move it on to the next, December 16th.
Yeah.
And then we'll make note that there's December 18th, Commissioner Appreciation Dinner. I also would like to talk about July 6th, I mean, I also would like to talk about July 6, I mean, sorry, January 6. Boy, I just flipped a whole year, huh? And that's probably a meeting we should consider canceling because with Christmas on the 25th, it becomes really hard for us to get a packet out with people being gone. It's just right, that's just really, I'm going to be gone, and I don't know what other staff is going to be gone.
Too onerous.
This is too much.
And I think we're all in agreement.
Okay. So I think we should cancel that.
Lawrence's birthday, so we definitely need to.
There you go. Are you happy now? Okay. And then I would like to just kind of go through the list real quickly and just tell you, I always like to give you a little update on what we're doing here. And some with the modification to the city council schedule for November, which we know we had back to back meetings, we had one on the 17th and one on the 24th, it kind of impacted staff's workload a little bit because of how the deadlines are for getting in reports. And so it's kind of put off some of the planning work as we were addressing things we had to get into city council. So I'd just like to say that we're we're still moving ahead with neighborhood planning, but neighborhood planning has had to be way late after the first of the year, once again, because things got moved around, one, because of the focus of the holidays, two, transient rental, you know, for the council, and then just an impact of staff having to do, you know, two city council meetings in a span of, you know, a week. So that's going to be going, we are going to reschedule it for after the first of the year. We will be have this rezone of Bryant Circle area coming in soon. But it probably will be also, because as you know, the first meeting in December is the only meeting the city council is having. So it's everything gets a little bit skewed with the holidays. So we continue to work on the cottages among the flowers. We're still working with the applicant and him providing some information. The drowned subdivision is still incomplete, and we're working to get information together. That has been seen a couple of times by this body. I don't know how many of you around the planning commission was brought forward, the drowned subdivision, there's been different versions of it, like over the last five, six, seven years. And so the version they have now is not a version that any planning commission has seen before. So I don't know if at some point we might be bringing that for a concept review. I'm not really sure. So we're still working on trying to get that complete. Working with the gentleman at 700 San Antonio Street, he has a number of things that he wants to go forward with. Again, incomplete items, still working with. The 334 East Ojai Avenue went to city council last night as we own the, that's the concept for the grass area between, as I said, Betty Lou's, Bonnie Lou's, and to the old thrift shop. Because we are, the city owns and fee title a finger that they're considering doing land swap with. We went to city council for a concept review, better known as kind of like a Mother May I, because they are a property owner, for them to direct staff that it's okay for us to sign an application and and move forward with the applicant. So it was a little bit out of ordinary sequence because us, the city being property owners, we needed to go there first, get the city council to say, yes, it's something I want to participate in. And then we've been instructed, Matt and I've been instructed, to come work on that project and bring it forward for you to then have the design, you know, the purview to design and see how you.
So city council approves of the idea? Is this more about process? Is that about process at this point?
The council's action was not to approve the proposal and not to approve the proposed land swap, but rather to approve us processing it and working it up, bringing it before the planning commission.
Okay.
They did not already, they did not pre-approve the deed swaps and the deeds, the deeds to facilitate the land swap yet. In other words, they said, yes, we're interested, keep going.
Okay.
But they didn't give final approval yet.
They indicated interest, though.
Exactly. As opposed to if the, if the. Council had said, we're not interested at all, it would have died. And they said, no, we're not, we're not opposed, we're interested, keep forward.
So now comes, okay.
I just want to make this clear. Say, somebody else had a very difficult time with us today because we are an applicant in this, the city council, the city owns the property. We had to go to them in order for them to be, to give authorization as someone who owns the property for us to then begin. So it's kind of dual hat in this particular, okay? So it seems to be something that kind of, so they're not blessing the concept, they're blessing the fact that we can act as their agent to engage in this process. So anyway, and moving on, did I say that correctly, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. And so then moving on. So we will be bringing that forward and probably quickly because, again, this is just a little bit unusual and and we'll probably be bringing forward a concept review and after Matt and I figure out the details. Thank you. Then 111 North Blanch Street, we're still working with them to get a complete project. This is the redevelopment of what used to be the printing facility on the corner of Blanch. And one of the issues that we're working with them on is just in lieu parking. And so I just wanted to let you understand, because I know these things sit on the list for a really long time, and people always wonder why they're on there for such a long time. And then 410 Ojai Avenue, that was what you saw as a concept review, has now come back for formal entitlement, working with that particular project proponent. And then finally, 601 Pearl Street, we've been working with them for over a year. Everybody knows what's going on there, that, you know, they bought, the city bought some land for them for the street extension. They've been working on that. They've come a couple of times for concept review.
Right.
The direction you gave them last time was, you know, possibly to come back again. We've met with them today. They've incorporated much of what you gave them as feedback. And so we think we're, they feel confident they can just go forward without having to come back again. You know, they did the porch, all the things, the meandering walk, it's all in there. So I think we're, I think we'll be looking forward to that going quickly. They are at least, and they are wanting to move forward this this year. We thought possibly looking and moving forward with the environmental review and then entitlements, you know, first part of next year. So that kind of gives you an overview. Just, I know it's kind of more detailed than you might want, but everybody does seem to seem to want to know why that list stays away.
Well, we have seen the project, like you said, a couple of times. And it's good to know that it's moving forward, that the acquisition of the property is in place now. So it's a lot more solid.
Everything seems to be go. And they, they're just, they're just been really excited to work with staff and planning commission, and it's been very collaborative. And so it's a nice experience for everybody, I think. And then the next one is liaison meeting rotation list. If there's any changes and anybody proposes on that.
I'm sorry, liaison meeting for what?
This is the the city, are your rotation lists?
Oh, the rotation list. Oh, okay. That's here. Yeah. So we can pick that up. I'm not getting this. I don't have, I don't get it, seven. Okay.
And then I have only one other thing that I just wanted. I'm sorry. Oh, no, I skipped in the, when Matt said, oh, there's a seven, but there's nothing there. My seven is a rotation list.
So looking at, yeah, we're going to do reports. And I think really, it's, we should do the reports first and then the liaison, you know, rotation list.
So excuse me for jumping ahead, but I also wanted to just bring other, one other thing up is that last night, there is also the landscape, the MULO, the Modified Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. You know, there was a new one from the state of California that did not come through you. We had just till December 1 to take action on that. It was sort of adopted, I think, in July of this year. Cities had only until December 1 to do something or have it take effect by law, order of law, did I say it right?
Operational law.
Operational law. And that's what we chose to do. The new ordinance is much more restrictive than the old ordinance. Staff and the city manager disgusted, community development staff and the city manager, didn't see a reason to then further modify what was already going to be further restrictions on our community, you know. So at this point, we want to have, and the city council adopted that by, on the consent calendar last night, have that in a place, let that that sort of be utilized for a while, see how it works for the community, and then see if we want to subsequently come back through and modify specific to Ojai. And you know, there are certain criteria of how you can do that. But at this point, it's so much more restrictive than the last version. It just feels that at this point, we're sort of, our development community is is struggling with all these new regulations and and restrictions. And it seems like at that point, it's it's just a good point to just stay at that, at that level. So that's what we intend to do for a while, and then come back later when we see how it's working for the community and letting them adjust to to the new model ordinance, and then seeing if there's something that needs to be done. So just to let you know, because at one time, we were all talking about working on it, working on handouts. At this point, with the new one, it's, it's, it's just another adjustment the contractors and development community have to adjust to.
Are you saying it, it's more restrictive?
Applies to more people and is more restrictive. And so as the state's mandates are coming down more restrictive, it just, it just makes less reason for us to have to elevate Ojai even more restrictive, you know, at that point. It just, it was sort of a decision of staff. And that's kind of, we put it out to the city council is that at this point, you know, let's, let's let our development community kind of grapple with this and adjust to it instead of just wanting to add more onto it because it is really moving progressive.
Okay.
Oops, a comment on that. So I actually sat in, or via webinar, with some of the state conferences. And I also met with local officials who are involved in water management and what have you, and that were part of contributing to this updated ordinance. So I just wanted to share that. But I also, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but I have, and you can actually get it off the state website, and I've printed it out. I don't have it with me tonight. But there's a nice encapsulated version of what the changes are. So it kind of flushes it out and makes it a little more easy to understand. And I also just wanted to say, you know, after this kind of getting used to it period with the ordinance, I'm happy to be, still be involved with going over it. I will say, yes, it is more restrictive. And after going through it and being somewhat part of the process, I think there's only maybe one or two little minor things that I would say we might want to look at as a city. But I'll wait and share that later. And another thing I wanted to share too was one of the webinars I sat in on, I thought was really helpful. They had people of, somebody from the city of Santa Monica, city of Long Beach, and then I think, and there was also a community in Northern California, I can't remember, might have been San Jose. But basically, they've already been doing some of this more restrictive requirements with the water issues. And they actually shared with how their staff has dealt with it. And I got a lot of nice, really good feedback. I took notes, and I think the webinar may still be available. So I'm just throwing that out as education for not only the public, but which we can go over, but also for staff. So, thank you.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Reports. And I have down here, November 10, but I think there was a swap.
Yeah, so that was November 10.
Okay. So you want to go with, run with the 10?
Sure. November 10 was all about vacation rentals. And the ad hoc committee presented their supposed options that they considered. And we had very lively discussions. I have to, one of the comments Randy Haney said, which I agree with 100%, was every time someone got up there to speak, you couldn't help but to agree with them. And then the next person came up to speak, who was in opposition to it, and you agreed with them too. So you were, you were constantly going back and forth because every one of them had really good, good comments. So it's going to be, I believe that the city council is allowing the, I'm thinking that they're going to regroup, consider the comments that were made, re-present those, maybe in adjusted view. I mean, you can comment on that when you come up, the adjusted parameters that they they originally gave that night, based on the input from the public, and see where it goes from there.
So the discussion continues.
The discussion continues, but I think they're gonna, I think it's getting to a point where they're, I think it's one more time, and they're going to have a pretty good outline. And then it's probably going to go in for some kind of draft of an ordinance. But Mayor Lara can speak on that.
So this was the first time that the ad hoc committee actually did the formal presentation?
They presented their report, yes. It was very, very informative.
Okay.
And it has a lot to do with our affordable, I mean, there's a lot of issues that dovetail into our affordable housing, the second dwelling ordinance and so on.
There's that interesting dovetail thing.
There's a big time dovetail in there.
Second unit.
Yes.
Ordinance, okay. Rosalie?
Okay. So there was a frightening presentation about the citrus silicid, sillid, and what the county agencies and there's a wonderful collaborative effort on part of various agencies on combating this. There's the, there's the bug, and then there's the disease. And, you know, of course, there was a little bit of back and forth about, you know, whether or not, you know, if they have to just use your general pesticide versus organics. And it sounds like it certainly can be treated with organics, but it's short-lived. You have to hit the bug directly. And if you're doing it organic, they have to spray it frequently. But they just talked about the devastation in Florida and how they're projecting that California is going to produce more citrus now in Florida because of how devastating this thing has been. And it was, the most interesting thing about that to me was that they were sort of recommending that if you don't, if you neglect your own citrus trees, you don't harvest the fruit, you don't water them, you don't take care of them anyway, that to consider taking them out because it's such a threat. So that was interesting. But but watch your trees. Let's see. There was a discussion about the management of Libby Ball, the foundation, who's, I think they've been managing it for about four years now, are losing 80K a year. This company Sterling Ventures was here to potentially be a partner with the city in promoting events there. But, you know, the the public really felt that that it needed more review, that they needed to involve an entertainment lawyer, be a little more circumspect with what they're doing. So it kind of got pushed back a little bit for more review, more, they created an ad hoc committee of several members of the community, one of which is going to be an entertainment lawyer. So they're, they're still working on that. But the guy, the guy from Sterling was very interesting. I think he said he thought this was a $6 million a year venture. I mean, it could potentially be that lucrative. And at one point, I think his suggestion was that, didn't, isn't that what he said? Six million? Six million a year? And then it's, you know, wow. And he also, you know, he basically went back to the council and said, what, you know, what does this community want? What do we want for for Libby Ball? He says, you know, hire him, you know, he, that was one option, was to hire him and pay him and let him do it. But anyway, we'll see what happens. It's nice to know we have, you know, I mean, but of course, the concern was is if we don't move along quickly, you know, 2016's, you know, it's going to be too late to book anything, book any acts. So. And then, of course, the hedges, no city council member would, meeting would be complete without a discussion of hedges, I guess. So it's getting, it's getting saner and saner as it goes along. So, so I think everybody has come to the place where they realize that there needs to be some flexibility with the way the ordinance is applied. And, you know, the moratorium is there, but can, you know, that there needs to be flexibility in terms of enforcement and that we need to separate out perhaps walls from hedges. And, you know, Betsy Clapp pointed out that there, there have never been any. There are no recorded accidents due to too tall of hedges. But of course, the safety concerns are still there, and they were reiterated. So there you go. That's all.
Thanks, guys. I don't think there was any billing appeals. I think that that happened. And how about the MAC meeting? The MAC meeting was, that didn't cancel? Okay. So is city council, they're not doing a December 22 meeting, are they? I have it down here, is December 22? I have it down here, it's December 20th. Okay. So I have Commissioner Merk scheduled for the 20th, oh, that would be Commissioner Lajowski, then.
Not the 22nd.
Huh?
22nd is off.
For December 8th.
So we just moved this down?
So yeah, 22nd, so everything's going to rotate from Commissioner Merk to the January 12th meeting, right? Everything just comes down one, one session later. So MAC, you're on for the 8th, you know that.
On off the chart.
And I don't think there's anything happening with building appeals, and I'll be surprised if something happens. No, it's canceled for MAC, so that's where we're at. All right. Marcevero Lara?
Thank you, Chair Foster's commissioners, staff. Interesting meeting. I think you guys gave excellent feedback to the applicant. Hopefully, he really does take that feedback and is in discouraged. I know that depending on the feedback that he was to get, they weren't sure how the escrow was going to go, so I just, but I thought that you guys did a good job representing the needs and values of this community, and I think that's what matters regardless of what's going on with the escrow, regardless about the history of the bowling alley. We know the history, we know the potential that it has, and that's why we're being very sensitive to that area. But with that said, your comments were very appropriate, in my opinion. I'm glad that the athletic club is putting the solar, we do talk about solar, taking advantage of our sun here, so I think that's a good project. And just on the side, just to reiterate some of the stuff that has already been mentioned by our community development director, Ms. Wold, and then about our liaisons, thank you guys for sitting through those meetings. I know, especially in November 10th meeting, was very gruesome and long, and, but I think it was important to hear the reactions from our community that night, because it was the first night that they were able to see the report from our ad hoc committee. And I know I had some concerns about it, the community obviously had some concerns about it. Now we're able to come back and put a December 8th date on vacation rentals, where I truly believe the council will start directing staff to a direction after dialogue. I think that was intent. I don't think we're going to put it off more, I don't think we need to do any more research, I don't think we need to do any more outreach, I think we're ready to start directing staff, but we need to have an honest dialogue between the council in public at that meeting. So that's where it's going to go, I think we'll have some direction. In terms of the Libby Bowl situation, again, it was tabled from November 10 to November 17, because again, some of us had issues about how it came to us, it came to the council, a lot of have concerns about what was the fine print in the contract, everything wasn't clear. I'm not an expert on developing contract, I need some more guidance, and so I felt like we needed more guidance, the community did. It was a difficult decision, because we do see that there is, again, good stuff that could come out of the bowl, and we potentially are going to be missing out on some acts this year, and we know that, but we think that it's important to take a step back and define our goals, our objectives, a little bit better before going to a vendor, or whatever we're going to decide, and put in an RFP. And I think that's the goal of the community, of the ad hoc committee. The goal is not to go all the way back to step one, when the bowl was reconstructed. The goal is here is to define parameters and boundaries, and have a clear view of how to develop a process of getting somebody to either manage the bowl, have us manage, again, a promoter to bring some acts. I think that's what we need to define, we're not going back to the beginning. I think we're further than that, we just need to clarify before putting the RFP and knowing a little bit. That's my perspective on it, and that's, I felt that's the direction we gave to staff and the ad hoc committee, and not to disregard what was already put in there, the effort that was done by council member Haney and Mayor Pro Tem Blas, I think they, their intentions were well, were well in terms of bringing this up to council, but it just, I mean, I think it was, their intention made it clear to us that we do need to take a step back. And in terms of fences and hedges, we want flexibility in terms of mitigation factors. That's the whole point of the, of relooking at that ordinance, and possibly separating the hedges versus wall and fence. And there's still some ambiguity there. We have full confidence that staff will bring up an excellent staff report and investigation. I think that we, our community did a lot of good in bringing up their comments, they're well-educated, I'm just impressed by living in this community, how people are so intelligent and have good comments for us. So I think that's where we're going with the, with the fence and hedges and wall issue ordinance and revising that. Again, we still have the neighborhood community workshop in our site, there's still other issues like what Ms. Wold brought up with the whole rezoning of the Bryant Circle, so we do have, and then we have another ad hoc committee with the cultural resources, that we're going to actually present some options to the council before drafting any type of resolution, implementing any policy. We are going to bring the current policy, and we did do some recommendation from the tribal and staff, then we're going to present that to the council and see what direction we want to go to. But we did, we encourage the public to submit their inputs, and we'll put that up there, but it's not set in stone what we're going to exactly do. That's going to be determined by the council as a whole, as a majority, where we want to go. So that's where we are at right now, I know we're very busy to be celebrating, don't forget to celebrate the holidays with your family, they just put a gray under the nights, and that's where you heard the music. I was like, where is the music coming from? It was coming from Libby Park, the event they had for the family, too. That's where the music was coming from, I just, yeah. So they, again, we're just moving along, every commission's doing a great job, we had a great joint meeting with the arts commission, fabulous job, the historical preservation commission, I hear, is coming up with the modification on some ordinance, and they're possibly proposing a phase one report for the chaperone, possibly. But again, a lot happening, you guys are doing a fantastic job, thank you guys, and thank you for giving your time to the city as a planning commission. Yes?
I'm just wondering if you could help me. Back on September 22nd, we had our joint meeting, we talked about the Ojai Sustainable Building Committee Review. Subsequent emails have gone forth, I just, I'm wondering how you recommend I best see that get on the city council's agenda. It's a very benign, trust me, it's a very mellow little ad hoc committee, I just feel that, I'm just confused as to what's, why, or how, or what steps do I need to do to get it on the agenda?
Well, I think that you, and part of it's because we've just been so swamped, and you are on my list as to put on things on the agenda. Councilmember Haney and councilmember Clapp wanted to bring back duties of all, of all commissioners and boards. It started with the Buildings Appeals Board, and we just decided to look at every, everyone's responsibilities, and what their scope of influence is. And I think that might be a good opportunity to bring this up, to see what board, I guess it's, it's going to be, finding what the whole group is going to be about, what the purpose is going to be about, I know you gave us a general description of what it was going to do, but I think we do want to look at it very carefully, and even though we are interested, we are going to look at it in great detail, because we just don't want to commit, don't want to create another committee just to create one, want there to be a purpose. And I guess, I don't know when that's going to come up. I would also, a thought that came to mind when you sent that email, have you presented it in front of the planning commission in terms of getting some clarity, getting some suggestions there, starting up the conversation there, have, has there been?
There's been some discussion, I mean, I think the commission's aware of the general scope, so, yeah, I'm just, so who actually creates the agenda for the meetings?
It's a combination, it's the city manager and the mayor.
Okay.
And that's where, and it's been a learning experience for me, being my first year as a mayor, because you're definitely being pulled in different directions by different people, and ultimately, you go, ultimately, I went back to defining the goals of the council, and then defining the goals of commission, that prioritize the agenda. But since we've had so many issues this year, more than I have experienced two previous years, we have gotten a great, great participation from our community that has made our meetings even longer. So finding, I don't want to just put in the agenda, just so that it's on the agenda, knowing that it's not going to come up as a discussion item, is, that's how I was crafting, along with obviously suggestions from staff and our city manager, because there's some things in there that we need to address, and that's how I would prioritize the items. But it was an item on my list, I'm going to pass on my list to Mayor, well, I shouldn't assume he's going to be appointed mayor, but the next mayor I'll pass on my list, but I would suggest possibly bringing it up to your fellow commissioners and seeing if they have any input before it goes to council. But I would definitely pass that list on to whoever's next on, and I'll pass it on to the city manager, too. Mr. Clark? Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner July?
I've been asked a couple of times about what the city council is going to do in preparation for the December 8th meeting on the vacation rentals. There was a little bit of confusion that the council was just going to, they weren't, the idea was, are they going to consider the conversation, and is the ad hoc committee going to re-meet again to evaluate the considerations that were outlined in that meeting, and resubmit a new plan on December 8th that is a little closer to where you think you need to be?
No. That wasn't the direction given. The direction was just to table it to your future meeting, to talk about our options to have a dialogue with the council, where we want to direct staff. That was my take on it, but the ad hoc committee wasn't going to produce a new document, I think we have, I think each council member feels like they've had enough information that we needed to, at least I needed to reflect and see which direction I want to direct staff and have an honest dialogue with my fellow colleagues.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Summers, did you have any input on that?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think you captured it, the commission, pardon me, the council wanted more time to think through the issues, but I did not, there was no direction either to staff to direct something, or to the ad hoc committee to reconsider it, it was just a reflection of, after nearly four hours of public comment, that that wasn't the time to make a decision, rather, that was the time to think and reflect.
I have one question.
Yes.
With regard to the revisions to the second unit ordinance, I found myself really unclear at the end of our last discussion as to why we were doing it. What is the purpose, what problem are we trying to solve? I felt like we kept, we're, you know, we're sort of talking about what we would do without any really clear idea of why we're doing it and what problem we're trying to solve. So I don't know if you can speak to that now, or you can get clarity from the city council to come back before we look at that again?
I could speak to it now. It was brought to us at the joint meeting, and the idea actually came from Commissioner, Commissioner?
Jagiola.
Jagiola. And, Commissioner Jack.
Yeah, there you go.
And he brought us, because he felt that there was some inconsistency or discrepancy between the non-compliance guidelines and the regular guidelines, to have a permitted, the second unit permitted. And I heard that night, that just wanted to see if the commission was open to some type of, some compatible guidelines between the two different issues. And that's where, and that's where council was like, okay, if you guys, you guys have enough, we felt that since you guys looked at the non-compliance units so thoroughly, that you, if there was some suggestions or modifications that you wanted to do to the regular second unit guidelines, you could, you could direct staff where you wanted those guidelines.
But I think what came out of that discussion is, we didn't really know, I mean, I don't think there was any real clarity of why we were doing it, I mean, just to, and then...
It was because of the request.
Okay, but that's why it was prioritized?
No, that's why we decided, okay, when you guys, feel free to take it up whenever you guys want.
Okay.
Yeah. I also want to say that it did morph from the comparison with the second compliance to the housing element. It morphed into now looking at the housing plan and tying that into a possible use of the second dwelling as a way to relieve some of the pressure from the affordable housing issue, to create more stock. And so that, it just morphed into that, so I'm not sure, I'm sure, that wasn't the original intent, but it's now morphed into that.
So the original intent was to make it compliant, make it?
Just to, the two had inconsistencies.
But the one is, but that's sunsetting out in December, you know what I mean? Like, why would we, why would we re-rig our whole thing to make it compliant with something that's over at the end of the year?
The other reason that, if I could jump in here, the other reason that drives it is that the housing element provides that second units are to be promoted as a way to help meet the affordable housing goals.
So is that, but is that what, that's why I guess I keep going back to?
I think the answer you're looking for, that I think is the answer to your question, is the housing element. Set this underlying goal of second units will be used in part to provide for affordable housing, reflected both in the housing elements' requirements to have the compliance program, which you'll recall has already been, already in place, and was called out as a specific program to be adopted, and in the general state law requirements that protect second units from limited regulation. Stemming from that was the decision, the proposal, to conform the compliant second unit housing guidelines to the, or at least harmonize the compliant and the non-compliant second unit guidelines, reflecting the underlying goal in the housing element, which is that second units should be promoted in order to promote affordable housing.
And when you say affordable, do you mean really, I mean, sort of the real, the legal definition?
Affordable in the definition under state law, which is...
Legal, not attainable, not low cost.
Yeah, affordable as in, affordable to moderate income.
Affordable by design.
Right.
No, no, affordable by law, by the legal definition.
Right.
Yes.
Not by design.
Yep.
Okay, good, that helps, because...
That's a history behind the non-compliant second unit, and the second unit.
Gotcha, thank you.
Other than that, any other questions? Great job tonight, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate that. This meeting's adjourned.